Good morning. All right, I'd like to begin this public hearing for today, Monday, March 24th of the Judiciary Committee. A couple of things before we get started, a reminder for everyone that you get three minutes to provide us with your testimony. If you have written your testimony, we have it, we can read it, you are not required to read it. So if you want to summarize, that will make it easier to stay within the three minutes. Trust me, it goes faster than most of us often think. You may receive questions from the committee members or a comment, I will check for that. And after that point, we will thank you and move on to the next person. Representative Staff, any comments before we begin? Okay, let's get this underway, we'll try to keep it moving. We will begin with Simon Amaya Price.
Good morning. And I can start now? Awesome. Good morning, my name is Simon Amaya Price. Thank you for allowing me to testify against HB 7135, which would make it more difficult for victims of sex change procedures to find justice. I have also submitted written testimony. Today I sit in front of you as a 20-year-old man, but for three years I thought I was a girl. I received my bachelor's degree in music from Berkeley last December with additional coursework at Harvard University in statistics and mathematics. I remember being 14. I was sitting in my pediatrician's office explaining to him that I was transgender and that my father wasn't affirming my identity. So my pediatrician asked my father, would you like a dead son or a living daughter? I was in the room when he asked this question. There is no other situation when a doctor is allowed to suggest suicide like this to a patient. Quite frankly, it's medical malpractice. If you ask parents of trans identified kids and other detransitioners, you'll discover that this is a common line used to manipulate parents into consenting to these procedures. Despite being referred to my local gender clinic three times by three separate doctors, the emotional black male and my gender dysphoria diagnosis, my father refused to take me to be medicalized and I hated him for it at the time, but today, I'm beyond grateful. And it's not just me, 3% of my generation identifies as transgender. Between the time I left after 10th grade and the time my class graduated, one-sixth of the boys in my class started identifying as trans, many of whom medicalized. My girlfriend is a detransitioner and I can't do much more than pray that if and when we decide to have kids, that despite the double mastectomy, despite the four years of cross-sex hormones she was put on starting as a minor, that she is able to carry a pregnancy to term. The other side believes that if you don't give trans identified kids puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones and surgeries, that they will kill themselves. That is a damned lie and I am living proof of that fact. I was not put on hormones, I was not operated on, and I have grown up to be a healthy and happy 20-year-old man. I have also talked to parents with detransitioner children who killed themselves after realizing they regretted what they had done to their bodies. What would you say to those parents? The other side of this issue has both psychological and economic incentives to support this bill. Imagine if you will, having administered cross-sex hormones or puberty blockers or referred children to have such procedures. What would you do if you were presented with evidence that what you were doing was not helping, but in fact harming your patients? I know I would have a very hard time accepting that. Transgender healthcare is a $4.4 billion industry. Though estimates vary, the lifetime cost of providing a trans identified individual with hormones and surgeries exceeds $100,000 on average. What would you do if you were a doctor or clinician who knew that every 10 patients you treated, you netted $1 million? If you're serious about protecting families and the health of children, you must vote against this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comment or question, Senator Kinsel?
Thank you very much Chairman Winfield, I know we have a lot of speakers, but I was just, I could swear that I've heard this testimony all before. Had you testified before our committee previously on a similar bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and do you, are you here on behalf of any organization or just yourself?
I represent myself and also many of the fellow detransitioners who have been harmed by these procedures.
Okay, well, thank you for your passion and I appreciate your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative Fishbough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Simon, thank you for coming here today. I did a lot of reading over the weekend about you and your story and very, very interested, you know, I, years ago, I had a client who was an adult and was going through this, they had decided that was good for them. And, you know, I was respectful of their choice. And about five years after, he called me up and he told me that he had gotten married and that his wife was pregnant, they were gonna have a baby. And we had a brief conversation and, you know, and he said, I learned that that wasn't the right path to go down. And he has traits that one would identify he's an effeminate individual. And our discussions since then have been about choices, changes, and regret. So it was very interesting this weekend reading, you know, I wanted to ask you, what influenced your transgender identification?
I started identifying as transgender at 14. I had just transferred schools in middle school, I experienced near daily homophobic bullying. My classmates called me the Efsler, I was followed home, things of that sort. In ninth grade, I went to a new school and things seemed to be a bit better, I made some friends. Very shortly after that group of friends left me. And then on a school trip, an older boy who was 18 at the time, who was also a high school student sexually assaulted me. I also learned in my health class about something called the gender unicorn. And the gender unicorn presents gender identity, gender expression, sex, sexual orientation, romantic orientation as different kind of spectrum. And our health class teacher asked us all to put ourselves on these different, these different lines and different places. I was also part of the Gay Straight Alliance, I'm bisexual, and I was trying to make sense of my experience of homophobic bullying. And one of our regular activities was watching YouTube videos by this transgender YouTuber called ContraPoints. And this is where I first learned about gender dysphoria and the steps you take if you have gender dysphoria and all of that together. This alienation from my body, from being sexually assaulted and from this bullying and discomfort with my sexuality and hard time making friends and all this sort of stuff kind of combined and led to my transgender identification. And I was immediately affirmed by my therapist.
And why did you eventually decide not to do that?
75% luck, 20% my dad saying no, he prevented me from medicalizing, thank God. And 5% maybe my own critical reasoning. I, there were a bunch of things that kind of went together, I, so I, my second year of college, I joined a sexual assault survivor support group. I found that to be really helpful and it helped me reintegrate with my body and make sense of my experiences. I also moved to a new therapist who was trained in cognitive behavioral therapy, dialectical behavioral therapy, and we did some imaginals around the traumatic experiences I've had in my life, which I found to be very helpful. There's one other thing, but, but that escapes me right now and that kind of slowly led, oh, this is what it was, so. My first year of college, I went to college early, at a college that was oriented to people who want to go to college early and that my first week there was the first time I had seen a double mastectomy scar. It was on a 16-year-old girl who had gotten it the year before when she was 15. And all of a sudden, everything became real. It wasn't something I could aspire to. It wasn't something imaginary that I wanted, that was just out of my reach. It was real, it was in front of me. And while I didn't immediately desist after that, that put something in my brain, so I started thinking about it subconsciously.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming here today. Very much appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, Representative, comment or question for members of the committee? Comment or question? If you're online, I'm trying to get on now, so you have to just speak up if you're a member of the committee. All right, seeing none, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Mallory Sanchez?
Good morning, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Mallory Sanchez and I'm a staff attorney with the Center for Children's Advocacy, a statewide private nonprofit legal organization. I work in the LGBTQ youth advocacy project, which provides direct legal services and systemic advocacy to queer and trans youth and young adults throughout the state, including through our medical legal partnerships with Yale New Haven Hospital, the Yale Pediatric Gender Program, and the Yale Child Study Center. I'm here in support of HB 7135, which extends protections to healthcare workers providing care to patients from other states, including through telehealth, and which creates parity between protections for reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming care. Connecticut was the first state to pass the shield law, but the most robust shield laws include explicit protections for telehealth. This bill would strengthen Connecticut's Reproductive Freedom Defense Act and maintains Connecticut's position as a leader in preserving access to healthcare. In passing this bill, Connecticut would be able to offer a critical layer of defense for its dedicated and compassionate healthcare workforce, seeking to respond to the national public health emergency that is our post-Roe reality. Healthcare bans and restrictions, whether they target reproductive health or evidence-based transgender healthcare disproportionately harm communities of color in those living in poverty, who already face health disparities and unequal access to health services. As the embedded attorney in a pediatric gender program, I have seen firsthand the difficult decisions families face when they are forced to travel and at times relocate to receive essential medical care. When access to life-saving medical care is on the line, families have to choose between jobs, community ties, and financial stability in their, in their children's future. But many low-income families cannot afford to take time off work or the expenses incurred by frequent travel or relocation. We must make sure our healthcare providers have the protections necessary to serve patients who most critically need access to healthcare services. You'll hear from speakers today who would call me a radical activist and part of the trans queer lobby. I'm not really sure what any of that means. What I can tell you is that I'm a trans attorney who works with low-income trans youth and who is deeply committed to the principles of health justice, which includes ensuring all people have access to life-saving medical care in our affirmed and our identities. All the leading medical associations in the US, including the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, endorse gender-affirming care because scientific research shows it is effective and essential to the health and well-being of transgender youth. But more than 90% of trans youth live in states that have proposed or passed laws restricting their rights, including their right to evidence-based medical care. I want all youth to know that they are valued. In a climate where many youth are surrounded by rhetoric that questions their right to exist, rhetoric that we know increases negative mental health outcomes, including suicide. It is more important than ever that Connecticut remains committed to ensuring that healthcare providers can continue serving our most vulnerable populations without fear. All youth deserve a future in which they can thrive. Thank you for your consideration and I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Comment or question, Representative Fishbough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ma'am. There was particular portions of this language I wanted to ask you about, since you are a lawyer. In line 30, I don't know if you have the language in front of you.
I do.
You do? Is that an affirmation?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Line 30 deals with, and 29 also, this gender-affirming healthcare services, and it talks about regardless of whether the patient was physically located in this state at the time the services were provided. Why is that necessary? If services were provided, let's say in Massachusetts, why would Connecticut be stepping into Massachusetts and what they do within their, their state?
My understanding is that Connecticut would not be doing that, rather Connecticut would be protecting providers who are physically located in Connecticut but maybe licensed in another state and are providing care under that license to someone who might be facing obstacles to receiving that care in their own state.
Okay, I understand what the intent may be. But it clearly says, and this is additional language, it's new language, regardless of whether the patient was physically located in this state at the time the services were provided. So we're shielding activity, or ostensibly, one is attempting to shield activity that perhaps would happen in another state. And why is that good public policy? Why isn't that unconstitutional? But why is, how do we have the power to do that?
You know, I will defer to some of my colleagues who are testifying later. But what I will say is that, you know, telehealth is an established practice that has good results and for patients that may be only able to see a specialist that's in another state once a year, for instance, they still need to have access to that provider the rest of the year and this provision would give them access to that.
Okay, I appreciate your answer and I keep on hearing that all, you know, for our public hearings. So what I'm gonna do now and I'm gonna continue to do is, can you, can you indicate to me who you are deferring to?
I know GLAD is testifying later today.
Okay, so there's a, is Hannah Hussey is on our list, is that who you're referring, okay?
And I'll also say that I am an attorney, but I'm an attorney for the patients, not the doctors. And we do see, you know, a lot of provider hesitancy and fear that prevents providers from doing, you know, what they are allowed to do under their licenses and protections like this are important in order to ensure that our healthcare workers aren't, you know, you know, operating in that sort of climate of fear.
Understood, but I'm looking at the language report. The other area I wanted to ask you about talks about that this is not, what's being shielded is not conversion therapy. So since it's excluding conversion therapy from this law, what is conversion therapy for the purposes of exclusion?
Conversion therapy, I'm not sure if it, it seems like it's defined in Section 19A 907. In sort of lay terms is the, the effort to change somebody's, you know, sexual orientation or gender identity. And so what this is doing is just simply clarifying that the effort to change someone's identity is not included in the definition of gender-affirming care. And therefore, when we're looking at making sure providers are protected, you know, we're not looking to protect harmful psychological practices.
Okay, and perhaps that's the intention of the proponents of the legislation, but when we look at the statute, and you did reference 19A 907, it says conversion therapy means any, any practice or treatment administered to a person under 18 years of age that seeks to change the person's sexual orientation or gender identity, including but not limited to any effort to change gender expression or eliminate or reduce sexual romance attraction, so on and so forth. I don't see the mental health, this being exclusively mental health. Is that your understanding? It appears that there's a conflict here that conversion therapy, at least as defined, would fall under this gender-affirming care. Do you agree?
I think there's, sorry, I cut you off.
No, do you agree or disagree?
I disagree. Conversion therapy is attempting to change someone's identity, not affirm that identity. So for instance, the provision of cross-sex hormones to affirm someone's identity is not changing, you know, their gender identity or sexual orientation, it is affirming, affirming it.
Okay, I think somebody's splitting hairs, but I, not you, but the proponents of the bill, I think it's a conflict. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative, comment or question for members of the committee? Comment or question? Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us this morning. Erin Williamson?
Good morning, my name is Erin Williamson and I serve as the Chief Programs and Strategy Officer at Love 146. We're an anti-trafficking organization that provides services to children and youth across the state of Connecticut that have experienced trafficking victimization. I am here today to testify in support of HB 7236, an act concerning human trafficking and sexual assault victims. And while we support the bill in totality, I'm specifically gonna talk about Section 16, which has to do with affirmative defense for juveniles for misdemeanor offenses that were committed as a direct result of their victimization. This is something that the Trafficking in Persons Council has been working on for several years now, behind the scenes, trying to come to some agreement. I think there's general recognition and growing recognition that part of trafficking victimization is force, fraud, and coercion, and that sometimes traffickers compel their victims to engage in criminal activity. What we are seeing with our children that we serve is sometimes this involves petty theft. Sometimes this involves low-level assaults. And what we're seeing is that when they're arrested for these things, sometimes it comes out that they're victims of trafficking, but they really have no reason to compel them to disclose that victimization, right? If it's something that just prosecutors can take into consideration, there's not a strong compelling reason for them to understand why sharing that information would actually help them in asserting a defense against their criminal activity, which again, they committed at the directive of their traffickers. So we're hoping that you'll support this bill, again, in its entirety. But I want to speak specifically to section sixteen, an affirmative defense. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comment or question, Representative Fishbowl?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming here today. I did read your backup. Do you know how an affirmative defense works?
Yeah, well, so I know I'm not a lawyer, so I'm an advocate. But my understanding is that it's something that's asserted at trial. But it also helps prosecutors in understanding how to work with individuals that come across them that are also victims of trafficking. They may make choices differently regarding charges and things like that, but it's something that's assertive at trial.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
And how in our present system, absent this language, if at all, are, is this coercion used to mitigate charges, perhaps reduce sentencing? Do you know?
So we have seen, and I will say we have some prosecutors that are really wonderful that work with us. And we do have seen that when this is known, prosecutors will work with defense attorneys and will come to a sentencing. We have, though, also seen times where children, it wasn't known. Children didn't disclose or weren't comfortable disclosing publicly to their public defender, in part because they didn't understand how it would help them in fighting the charges against them. They didn't, they didn't make that connection.
Okay. Would you agree that being a victim of human traffic is not only a physical situation, but also a mental debilitating situation?
Absolutely. I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of what the children that we work with experience is not always physical. A lot of it is coercive and mental and threats and all of that, yes.
And that, that lingers with people that have escaped human trafficking.
For years, yes.
And that's what I'm trying to put together here because, you know, when we look at, this is an affirmative defense, which means it's basically a bar to being convicted of committing a crime merely by asserting that you were a victim of human trafficking.
So no, it has to be a direct relationship, and it's for juveniles, as it's currently written. So it's for juveniles, and the crime has to be committed as a direct result of the victimization. So it's not a get-out-of-jail-free card where you could say, twenty years ago, I was a victim of human trafficking, and so therefore I can engage in any sort of criminal activity. It's saying, this was something that was done as a result of my victimization, and you have to be able to show that in court.
Okay, I, I agree with the intent, right? But as written, I don't think we have that direct link up. Because I'm looking at, you know, there's various class A misdemeanors, which would apply here. Abuse, abuse, abusive, the elderly is a class A misdemeanor, right? So if we agree that the effect of human trafficking lingers with someone, why wouldn't this language be able to be used as a defense after the human trafficking is over? After they have escaped the bonds, right? And say, well, because I still suffer from the mental illness that results from that, I committed this crime. Or there's other class A misdemeanors, inciting a riot is a class A misdemeanor. The other one, reckless endangerment in the first, which could end up in a death, right? So I understand where you want to be, and I sort of agree with where you want to be. I just think we got to write it, you know, the direct causal. And I don't know that we can do that with something like this, so.
So what I will say is, I know members from the defense bar are speaking. I know we have affirmative defense for a lot of other things within statute, and we've figured out how to write them in a way that allows for affirmative defense. I think if we can figure it out for other things, and especially as it relates to adults, certainly we can figure it out for juveniles as it relates to misdemeanors and the victimization as egregious as human trafficking.
What about, and I don't want to necessarily negotiate in public, but that the crime was coerced by a convicted human trafficker?
So I would leave that, I would want a lawyer to advise me before. I know that this is language that has been through many iterations, including with prosecutors and the defense bar. And so it was a language that they both kind of came to see as being acceptable after many, many, many conversations. So I don't get the sense that prosecutors are concerned that this is going to be utilized in the way that I think you're maybe concerned about, at least as we're talking. I think my, my one concern about making it too narrow is that if we get, is that to your point, there are many, many ways in which traffickers manipulate. Sometimes it's through coercion, sometimes it's through actual force, sometimes it's through threats. And so I think definitionally, we just would need to be careful about kind of narrowing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Gilchrist.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Erin, for being here today and your work. Could you first just explain some of the process that went into getting to this language? And then second, just based on your experience and your work, which thank you for the work you do, could you give an example, of course, not using identifying, just so it can paint the picture of who this would help?
Sure. So, um, yeah, we've been working on this for about three years. I think we've been talking about it in the Trafficking in Persons Council for potentially even a little bit longer. There were many meetings with yourself, myself, people from the defense bar, people from the prosecutor's office. Sometimes we brought in Crystal Rich, who oversees the MDTs. We talked about kind of all of the broad array of concerns. We talked about whether this should be inclusive of adults, whether it should be inclusive of felonies. I will say there are cases in other states where there are victims of trafficking who, and I think we talked, a similar bill came up a couple, about a week ago in terms of a defense, kind of a self-defense type of thing related to human trafficking and sexual abuse and domestic violence. That is the case, right? We've seen trafficking victims kill their traffickers in order to escape. And after a lot of talk back and forth, this is the language that kind of was agreed upon and was voted through the Trafficking in Persons Council. Obviously, as a victim advocate, I am supportive of making it as expansive as possible. But I understand that, you know, we need to start where there's kind of agreement, which is why I'm here to support it. I will say, you know, there, there are a couple of examples of kids that we've worked with. I know that there are kids, sometimes kids are given quotas where they have to bring back to the trafficker a certain amount of money every night, or else they experience consequences. And sometimes that is physical violence against themselves. Sometimes that's physical violence against a child that they have. It can be different things. And so we have had kids who have stolen money in order to meet that quota and then been prosecuted for stealing that money. And again, I think when you think about a child and you think about them being arrested and certainly brain development and how traffickers manipulate children, oftentimes it takes a little bit for them to understand the connection between being arrested for that and the traffickers. And so if, if they feel comfortable and if a defense attorney is able to sit and sit with them and talk to them about kind of what brought them to that point, that disclosure of information is really critically important, whether it's to the defense attorney, whether it's to a social worker like ourselves. I think those critical pieces of information. When they come and see us and we explain to them, this happened because you were a victim, and then they continue to be prosecuted for it, it sends a very different message of, well, you just told me that I was a victim of a crime. You just told me that what happened to me shouldn't have happened to me, and yet I'm still being prosecuted through the criminal justice system and being treated as an offender. And so we're sending a very dual message. And once we get a kid involved in juvenile justice, we know that the chances that they're going to reoffend, the chances that there's going to be even more disruption in their education and their later-on employment, that, you know, the results for being involved in the juvenile justice system are not great. We should be keeping victims out of that system to the extent that we can.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Comment or question for members of the committee? Comment or question? Seeing none, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll hear from Matt Lindstrubis. Matt Lindstrubis. Joe Keoghan.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi. Senator Winfield, Representative Strastem, and members of the Judiciary Committee, good morning. My name is Joe Keogh. I am a founding member of the Connecticut Coalition to End Female Genital Mutilation or Cutting, and I'm also a licensed professional counselor associate. Since 2014, my private counseling practice has been devoted to working with female survivors of gender-based violence. And I currently specialize in working with survivors of female genital mutilation or cutting, or FGMC. As a representative of the Connecticut Coalition to End FGMC, an advisory board member of SEHEO, United Against Female, Female Genital Cutting, and a member of the U.S. End FGMC Network, I have dedicated the last four years to advancing awareness of FGMC, especially in Connecticut. In my capacity as a therapist, I have facilitated training sessions for mental health professionals on effectively supporting survivors of FGMC. And more importantly, I have worked directly with survivors, listened to their experiences, and supported their healing journeys to the best of my ability. As with any form of gender-based violence, each person's experience of FGMC is unique. However, FGMC can have profoundly traumatic and lifelong impacts on survivors. The mental health repercussions of FGMC can be severe and enduring, manifesting as post-traumatic stress disorder, or PTSD, depression, anxiety, psychosexual issues, chronic shame, and disenfranchised grief. Survivors may also endure betrayal trauma, where trust in caregivers is so deeply violated that their ability to trust others is forever compromised. Intergenerational trauma may also afflict communities where FGMC is a longstanding practice. The journey to heal from the constellation of mental health impacts of FGMC is complex and can span months, years, or a lifetime. I am sincerely encouraged that the Judiciary Committee has introduced a bill to address FGMC in Connecticut during the current legislative session. However, the language proposed in raise bill number one four three eight does not sufficiently address the needs of survivors, nor does it provide essential education about the risks associated with FGMC or a comprehensive strategy for its prevention. In contrast, the bill language proposed by the Connecticut Coalition to End FGMC, which I have attached to my written testimony, is holistic, survivor-driven, and shaped by meaningful discussions with the Connecticut Alliance to End Sexual Violence and the Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence, or CCATV.
Joe, your, your time, I don't know if you heard the bell. I know it's difficult.
I didn't. I'm sorry. I didn't hear it online. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, and welcome any questions that committee members may have.
Thank you, and, and I wasn't scolding you. I was just making you aware.
No, thank you. I appreciate that, Senator.
Trying to be nice around here. Comment or question for members of the committee? Senator Kessel?
Thank you very much, Chairman Winfield. And you don't have to try to be nice. You're just nice. And, uh, yeah, with everybody testifying online, it's hard to hear the bell. So there'll be reminders throughout the day. Thank you for your testimony, and I appreciate you, pending to your testimony, new language that you feel might be sufficient. Are you familiar with the fact that I tried to get a similar bill to the one today through the legislature a few years ago, and it just died in the Senate? And one of the primary criticisms that I faced in bringing it out on the floor was it disproportionately impacts certain people of certain ethnicities and nationalities and goes against their traditions. And it was like just fighting up against a brick wall regarding that. And I appreciate people taking that position, but, you know, there was substantial information from the federal government saying it has huge medical consequences. I'm glad that you spoke about the mental and psychological consequences of this practice. And I'm just wondering what your answer would be to those folks who threw that up as a reason to vote no.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. Senator Kessel, yes, I am familiar with your past involvement with legislation to ban FGMC in Connecticut, and thank you for that. And I am also aware of the concerns that have been raised on this particular issue. I think it's important to know that FGMC has been practiced in this country since the eighteen hundreds. It was actually covered by Blue Cross, I believe, Insurance until the nineteen seventies as a treatment for lesbianism, female hypersexuality, and other issues. So I think the view that this is only an issue that impacts immigrant communities is false. That, that is a running narrative, and it is an incorrect narrative. You will hear from other members of the Connecticut Coalition to End FGMC today, who are people of color and who are survivors, that can speak to this issue from a much more informed place, I think. But FGMC, at the end of the day, is a human rights violation. And to me, the argument that we should not do everything in our power to protect the bodies of all girls, including black and brown girls, is, is one that I've never quite understood. I think we need to do whatever we can to protect the most vulnerable among us. And in this country, especially at this point in time, that includes black and brown girls.
And through you, Mr. Chair, just one more quick follow-up. I appreciate your testimony regarding that. And it just seems to me maybe the time is more ripe now than it was a few years ago. To me, it seems like a few years ago. Maybe it was a little longer than that. It's back when then Senator Kasser was around, and I'm not sure how many years. The years are starting to fly by. But do you feel like the, the public is more accepting now of moving forward with, God bless you, legislation such as this banning this practice for its negative repercussions, both physically and mentally? It just seemed like perhaps it was not as well-known back when that original proposal was being moved forward. And the fact that it got out of this committee and made it to the floor of the Senate was no small feat. But it just, I just wonder if people might be more sensitive to the, to this issue now. And I was not aware of a group such as yours being around at that time. Maybe I had just missed it, but I'm just wondering if there's been some education that's gone on without, within, throughout the state of Connecticut.
Thank you for that question. I will say that the last time I provided testimony on this issue was in 2020, and I believe that's the timeframe you're referring to. The Connecticut Coalition was formed in 2021. So indeed, we were not involved with the twenty twenty bill. We have been doing quite a bit of education and have had educational initiatives with state agencies, with state senators and representatives, and have done a series of op-eds and articles to try to inform the public best we can. So in answer to your question, we certainly have been doing our best to provide educational opportunities for the public and for members of the legislature over the past four years.
Well, I just want to say thank you for all your efforts. I think it makes a huge amount of difference when there's grassroots groups that form. The fact that you guys were not in existence in 2020, back when this was originally brought forward, at least by myself. The fact that you guys were not in existence in 2020, back when this was originally brought forward, at least by myself. There may have been earlier attempts that I was not aware of. But I think times have changed in the last five years, and I think that hopefully the, the wind will be in the sails moving this forward this year. But again, your efforts are truly appreciated. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman Winfield.
Thank you, Senator Kessel.
Comment or question for members of the committee. Comment or question. Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
Mars Rodriguez.
Senator Winfield, Senator Kessel, and the identified members of the Judiciary Committee, thank you for having us, giving us a space to talk here. I'm Mars Rodriguez, resident of Newington, and I'm here to speak in support of HB 7135 and that concern the provision and protections for healthcare providers of gender-affirming care and abortion care, or reproductive healthcare more broadly. So I'm not a medical professional, obviously, and you'll be hearing from people who are much more qualified than me to speak on the medical end of this, but I do have a master's in political science, and I want to speak on sort of the socio-political importance of this bill in this current time that we live in. Right? I want to situate this piece of legislation with the fact that we wouldn't need a bill having all these protections and addressing these, this type of healthcare if there were not active threats against the livelihood of these providers and the people seeking this type of care. The service that these specialists provide is a private healthcare decision made by the patient and the provider, and we require this bill because of the potential for federal overreach into these private healthcare decisions, right? I'm sure we all love and abide by the American values, right? The life, the right to life, the right to liberty, the right to the pursuit of happiness, and that is all within seeking abortion care, within seeking gender-affirming care, right? Safe access to abortions and gender-affirming care saves lives. This is statistically proven. Lack of government interference to these provisions allows us to achieve our liberties and allows us to achieve our happiness, whatever that may be for the respective person. So the right for these professionals to practice these services ensures that peoples maintain their rights, that government does not interfere in these private healthcare decisions. There was a study by Tulane University that found that states with more restrictive abortion policies had a 7% increase in maternal deaths. The Trevor Project found that anti-trans laws increased suicide attempts amongst trans individuals by 74%. These are human lives. And if we value human lives, then we certainly would value allowing these types of healthcare to go really, not necessarily unrestricted, right? But unaffected by this blatant partisan attack and just sort of complete overreach of these boundaries that we all value. Personally speaking, gender-affirming care saved my life. I am one of those many people who, before receiving HRT, before having the conversations that I've had with my HRT provider, I was on the brink of suicide. I was deeply, deeply depressed and unhappy with my being every single morning, and this was life-saving healthcare for me. I am not on any kind of antidepressants. I'm not on any kind of medication other than my HRT. And I am the happiest that I have ever been in my life because of that medication, right? And there are millions and millions of stories out there that are really similar. And there are people who, yeah, who detransition, people who go through that process, and they realize it's not for them. And you know what? They're allowed to do that. That is their right as a human being, as an individual, to realize that is not their path. Just because you start doesn't mean you have to go through with it. That is, I think, that is brave of them to realize that's not for them, but that doesn't mean that us, other trans people who do need this healthcare and who do have benefit from it should be punished for trying to seek that, and more so the providers who afford that healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment or question for members of the committee. Comment or question for members of the committee. And now, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Palmer Lavelle.
Palmer. Hello? Can you hear me? Oh, awesome. Okay. Hi, my name is Palmer Lavelle. I'm a lifelong resident of Connecticut, and I'm also a non-binary transgender person whose life has improved because of the gender-affirming care I've received. In my work as a nurse, I provide gender-affirming care to transgender and non-binary patients, and I'm here to speak in support of bill 7135. I'd like to start by saying that gender-affirming care is backed by science. Only a very small minority of people who identify as transgender go on to detransition, and of those, the majority detransition for reasons besides realizing they're not transgender, such as discrimination or lack of resources to pursue transition. Studies that look at the regret rates for gender-affirming surgery consistently find those rates to be among the lowest, if not the lowest for any kind of surgery. It's around 1% in most cases that have studied it. And you may hear today, those opposing of the bill mention a report out of the UK called the Cass Report, and I'd like to point out this report has been heavily criticized, including by Yale University, as flawed. The majority of research out there supports gender-affirming care, which is why all of the major medical organizations in the United States also support it. For those who aren't aware of the Cass Report, it's a, it's a report out of the UK that called into question the existing research on gender-affirming care and has been used to justify the restriction of puberty blockers. And I, I mean, I see the truth of how gender-affirming care, as the previous speaker just said, saves lives and improve lives every day based on the patients I work with and in my own life, because the gender-affirming care I've received has really helped me. But this is not the only point I'd like to make. The second one is that some of the anti-abortion and anti-gender-affirming care laws have an impact, a chilling effect on medical care in this country. A lot of the laws in other states, they're overly broad. They have poorly defined exceptions and harsh penalties. So doctors and hospitals are worried about being sued into oblivion. Doctors even worry about going to jail. And I don't know about everyone here today, but I, for one, if I'm seeking medical treatment, particularly for something that could become life-threatening, I don't want a doctor who hesitates. In the case of abortion bans, with the exception of life for the pregnant person, that line can be very hard to draw, such as in the case of sepsis. The line between this person's sort of stable and in danger, but not life-threatening danger, and this person's past the point of no return can change quickly and can be hard to spot. And we've seen those results play out in real time. There was a recent report by ProPublica that found a sharp increase in the rates of sepsis and in deaths for pregnant people and postpartum people. And I don't feel like these issues should be imported into our state. I think we can make our own laws about what types of care we offer, and I think we should make those laws based on the research and on the results. And I don't think that my medical care that I provide should be affected by laws from other states passed by officials that I didn't elect.
Palmer, you're, I don't know if you heard the bell, but the bell did.
Apologies. I didn't hear it.
Nope. Do not apologize. Let me check to see if there are any comments or questions.
Sure.
Comment, question for members of the committee. Comment or question. I, I want to thank you very much for joining us this morning to provide us with your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Mona Colwell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honorable members of the committee, my name is Mona Colwell, and I'm a resident of Connecticut, speaking today in strong opposition of HB 7135. While this bill claims to protect healthcare access, it dangerously expands the framework for irreversible gender-affirming procedures on children, procedures that I believe constitute gender mutilation and should be classified at minimum as a Class D felony under Connecticut law as proposed in Senate Bill 1438, which is also on the docket today. HB 7135 defines gender-affirming healthcare services broadly encompassing all medical care related to gender dysphoria and gender incongruences outlined in the DSM V and ICD classifications. This includes hormone treatments and surgeries that permanently alter a child's body, interventions that minors, due to their age and developmental stage, cannot fully consent to. Scientific evidence, including studies from the American College of Pediatrics and longitudinal research from Europe, indicate that many children with gender dysphoria usually naturally desist as they mature, often without such invasive measures. Yet this bill shields providers who perform, perform these procedures from accountability, even when they result in long-term lifelong harm. Section 1 of HB 7135 allows individuals to recover damages from those who challenge these practices in other states, effectively silencing parents or advocates who seek justice for harmed children. Sections 3, 4, 5, and 6 prevent disciplinary actions against providers and institutions involved in gender-affirming care, even if their actions elsewhere would violate ethical standards. This creates a legal sanctuary for experimentation on minors, undermining Connecticut's duty to protect its youth. Section 2 further cloaks these procedures in secrecy by restricting disclosure of related medical records, potentially hiding malpractice or coercion from scrutiny. I believe that any medical procedure causing irreversible physical altercation to a child's healthy body based on gender identity is mutilation, not care. A minimum Class D felony carrying up to five years in prison is a fitting consequence for such acts reflecting their severity under Connecticut's penal code for child harm. HB 7135, however, moves in the opposite direction, entrenching these practices by insulating providers from liability and oversight. This is not protection, it's endangerment. I urge you to reject HB 7135 and instead enact a legislation that safeguard children by classifying gender mutilation at a minimum as a Class D felony. Our state must prioritize the well-being of its minors over ideological agendas, ensuring they are protected from irreversible decisions that they cannot fully comprehend. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter.
Thank you. Comment or question for members of the committee. Comment or question for members of the committee. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Good morning. I'm sorry. Wait, wait. Representative O'Day, sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Colwell. Just, I was looking at your testimony. I don't see any reference to the studies you and I'm wondering if you can email us those studies that you referenced.
I will. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Representative O'Day. And again, sorry about that. Seeing no further questions or comments. Thank you very much for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sarah Mulster. Sarah Mulster. Anastasia Law.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
You may pause.
Thank you. Thank you for raising SB 1438, an act prohibiting female genital mutilation and providing the opportunity to give testimony. My name is Anastasia Law. I'm a lawyer and the program officer for North America at Equality Now, an international human rights organization established in 1992, working to protect the rights of all women and girls around the world. I'm also a member of the Connecticut Coalition to End FGMC. Female genital mutilation is recognized in the U.S. and internationally as a human rights violation, an extreme form of gender-based violence, and a harmful cultural practice. Under international law, including the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, which the U.S. has ratified, governments are obligated to protect women and girls from FGM as a form of sex and gender-based discrimination. In October 2023, the U.N. Human Rights Committee, the committee charged with compliance of the ICCPR Treaty, urged the U.S. to encourage states to pass legislation that prohibits and criminalizes all forms of FGMC. While federal law prohibits FGM, it is not enough. Federal agencies lack the resources and local reach necessary to comprehensively tackle FGM, and states thus play a critical role in enforcing laws, preventing the practice, and supporting survivors. Connecticut remains one of only nine states without a law against FGM. SB 1438 is an important step, but to be effective, the law must be comprehensive. It should utilize the full World Health Organization definition of FGM and include prevention measures such as education and training for healthcare providers. Additionally, we ask that the bill include the right of the child to bring a civil action with a told statute of limitations for up to 30 years after the victim turns 18. This mirrors the protections given to child victims of child sexual assault in the state. The right of a victim to seek civil remedies is included in the FGM legislation of other states, including Michigan, as well as federal anti-human trafficking legislation. Finally, we are concerned that the bill treats FGM as only a Class D felony, the lowest tier of felony in Connecticut. Childhood sexual assault is a Class C felony, and FGM should be treated with equal gravity. Reclassifying FGM as a Class C felony would reflect the seriousness of the offense and better align with protections for other forms of child abuse. Finally, it's important to note that FGM is not the same as gender-affirming care, and the two should not be conflated. Equality Now strongly supports the passage of SB 1438 and urges lawmakers to strengthen the bill's language to ensure it fully protects women and girls and aligns with international best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment or question for members of the committee. Comment or question for members of the committee. Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us. I'll just take a moment to say what I should have said when I did my opening. If you happen to get missed, or miss your turn, I guess is more accurate, at the end, of course, dependent upon what time the end is. But at the end, we will make an attempt to, to grab you and see if you are available to provide your testimony. We will not, except for a very, a set of very special circumstances, put you into the order as we keep going. Okay. Emma Scott.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. My name is Emma Scott. I will be speaking in favor of HB 7135 today. So I want to explain the situation for trans people in this country right now, why legislation, legislation like HB 7135 is desperately needed. Currently in Texas, there's a proposed law that would essentially make it illegal to be trans in certain ways, and that people who say they are a different gender or present as such could be found guilty of committing fraud for supposedly misrepresenting their gender. So this is, these are, laws are as extreme as possible. It's a law that essentially outlaws an entire group of people based on fringe theory. And at the federal and state level across the country, trans people are under relentless attack. It's, it's truly under, impossible to understate the sheer blatant malice behind the laws and federal actions we're seeing. And one of the primary targets of these attacks is gender-affirming care. So in 26 states already, we've seen bans passed or proposed, passed restricting gender-affirming care for youth and even adults. I need to make it clear that gender-affirming care is healthcare. And the far right has constructed a narrative that it's mutilation or needs to be restricted for the benefit of trans people they claim are just mentally ill. And in that statement, we see right there what this is all about. This is an attempt to erase our existence, to use every tool available to make it impossible to transition to be ourselves. And this is all based on a lie that we don't exist, even though we obviously exist. Gender-affirming care is essential, essential for those who need it. It's literally life-saving. We have enormous amounts of sites with evidence that has immense positive effects on those who use it. For many of us, HRT and gender-affirming care finally gave us the body we could live in, that allowed us to feel like we weren't trapped in a body that felt like a prison. And the thought of that being torn away by extremism and a blatant assault on basic human autonomy seems worse than death for many of us. And as a result of these attacks on our healthcare, people are leaving states with restrictions and coming to states that will provide care. But those restricted states, and now even the federal government, have made it clear that they plan to use fringe legal theories to attack states, including this one, which have become medical safe havens for people seeking that care. This means is that a safe state must pass legislation that protects its providers and patients, keep them safe from a wave of bad-faith authoritarian legislative attacks. And this is just the bare minimum for protection right now. And so I also want to make it clear how dire the situation is for bodily autonomy in general for everybody, not just trans people. The state of Texas recently arrested a midwife for, just for providing abortion, although they claimed it was based on other charges to destroy the reality of the situation. And this is a goal of the far right now. Hollow out the diversity and multicultural nature of our nation, is it? We've always known it to be our entire lives and replace it with a Christian nationalist, white supremacist, theocratic dystopia, where marginalized groups like queer and trans people will have no place in it. So if we want to avoid such a fate, you know, in states like our own, we have to put up walls, fortifications against these attacks. We have to remain a safe haven for people who are already here and those fleeing to places like this from across the country. And there's no reason to expect that these legislative attempts at the federal and state level to dismantle gender-affirming care and bodily autonomy will slow down anytime soon. So I also just want to spend some time making a, you know, a statement about the so-called detransition epidemic. This is not what a lot of people are claiming it to be. There's no real epidemic of detransition. Is this publicly coordinated, fabricated? Yes?
The, the bell has sounded, so your time has elapsed. Let me check the committee and see if there are comments or questions.
Okay.
Or question for members of the committee. Representative Gilchrist.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if you'd indulge me, I'd just love to hear more about what the speaker was sharing.
Oh, you mean what I was saying about at the end right there?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say that this is basically, has been a coordinated attack from different groups. What they will do is they will go from state to state, either fly people in or bring people on virtually. These people that have been, like, a lot of them have been paid or groomed or trained to basically be professional detransitioners. Like, they were found, because there are not a whole lot of detransitioners that are actually willing to do this. Like, they were found, because there are not a whole lot of detransitioners that are actually willing to do this. Which is why they use so many of the same ones. Uh, they'll bring them state to state to state, doing the same thing over and over again, it's like a traveling act almost. Uh, and they will say the same things, they'll say, you know, uh, this is mutilation, this happened to me, this, this, this. Not to say that sometimes those things don't happen just by the sheer odds of it, but it's incredibly, incredibly rare. For somebody to just decide to transition and then go that far and then just detransition. And it turns out that they weren't trans at all and that they were just being tripped or manipulated, that's. That basically doesn't happen at all. It's usually what it is, is somebody, uh, was trans and then they detransitioned because they were pressured into it. It just became impossible for them to live in their real identity, so they did, so they detransitioned and just. Went back to living the way they were before, not because they wanted to, but because they had to, or sometimes, you know, uh, people are. Perhaps non-binary or some, their gender identity is more complex than they may have initially thought. And that there are some of, uh, of the effects of the transition that they didn't want. But in general, if you ask most people that consider themselves detransitioners, they will say that, that gender affirming care. Should absolutely be available to as many people as possible. Uh, and even the things that they, if they regret anything, you know, they were still. Would rather have that option available to everybody than just, you know, just restrict it just in case. I mean, an example of this is like, you, you think about any other medical procedure, there's always a risk of, of regret. But for gender affirming care, it's incredibly low compared to almost any other procedure, really.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Comment or question for members of the committee, comment or question for members of the committee? See now, thank you very much for joining us today. Next, Mar- Maria Tahir.
Oh, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, good morning, thank you for allowing me to speak today on Bill fourteen thirty-eight and act prohibiting female genital mutilation. My name is Maria Tahir and I've been working in the gender based violence issues. Including the topic of FGM C or female genital mutilation and cutting for fifteen years. I've completed extensive research on FGM C and provided cultural competency to frontline professionals like healthcare providers, social workers, educators. Child protection and others who come in contact with the women who have undergone it. And in twenty fifteen, I co-founded an organization, Seo, to use storytelling methods to elevate the conversation that FGM C happens in the U.S. And in twenty twenty, I co-founded the Connecticut Coalition to End FGM C to advocate for legislation protecting girls from FGM C. And to ensure survivor voices were heard in the creation of such legislation. With my experience given, while I am very much encouraged and support. A bill addressing FGM C in Connecticut, I do not believe that simply having a criminal penalty for the law as currently stated in the bill. Will be sufficient. FGM C is a gender, form of gender based violence, is a social norm and is learned behavior that occurs from one generation to the next. Much like how we know family violence is learned behavior, the Connecticut Coalition and Seo believe we should have comprehensive legislation. That will raise awareness of the harmfulness of FGM C, provide a means of redress for survivors and make the practice illegal. The current drafted bill does not address many of the needs of survivors. For example, the definition does not capture all the types of FGM C as defined by the World Health Organization or even under the federal law on FGM C. So certain forms will not be banned, nor does it include the education of stakeholders and first responders. Nor civil remedies for survivors who are cut when they are children. Furthermore, it treats the crime as a lesser crime when in fact FGM C is an extreme form of violence and torture with the result. That the removal of external genitalia can forever affect girls reproductive health and their lives. Education is vital to this bill and there is misconception that FGM C only affects immigrant communities, however. Our digital storytelling project at Seo does show that it occurs to many different individuals, including myself. I am a survivor of FGM C as well and I was born in the United States and taken to India to have it done. FGM C does not discriminate, it occurs to girls of all different backgrounds, socioeconomic status, education level and citizenship status. The Center for Disease Control has estimated that half a million women and girls in the U.S. have undergone FGM C. And I believe this number to be higher as due to method, methodological constraints, women like myself and others. Who have come to our storytelling project have not been included because of their, um, background. Forty-one states have laws and I believe Connecticut should as well. But we should do so in a manner that addresses FGM C comprehensively. So I strongly encourage you to include provisions for education and civil remedies in Bill fourteen thirty-eight. To ensure that FGM C survivors can gain the support they need. And finally, I just want to reiterate that FGM C is gender based violence and not the same as gender affirming care.
Please, I, I appreciate that you want to get your testimony in, but if everyone does that, we have a problem. So.
And I understand, I'm done now, so just needed to finish that and I didn't hear the bell, so sorry about that.
Let me, let me check to make sure, are there comments or questions for members of the committee, Representative Gilchrist?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Maria, for, uh, your work and, uh, continued advocacy and being here today. Can you speak a little to the importance of the civil remedy?
Yes, definitely, um, especially when you recognize that FGM C is an issue that impacts minors. So it impacts children, it's usually done anywhere from infancy to adolescence. Um, and many individuals don't even recognize that it has occurred to them. I know we've had many stories of individuals who haven't, um, known it's occurred to them till later in life, or if they have memories that trauma. Is something that they are, um, trying to understand throughout their lifetime as well too. So having civil remedies where an individual can, as they are making sense of what happens to them. Because this is a form of gender based violence that was normalized, so might not even be recognized or as violence until they're older. And having that ability to take that action, um, as an adult is something that can help give agency and power over individuals. But again, really recognizing that we need this comprehensive law so that we have civil remedies as well as having, um. Making it criminal and education is really important.
Great, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Comment or question from other members of the committee, comment or question? See now, thank you very much for joining us and providing us with your testimony.
Thanks.
Taj Galbert.
Good morning, um, my name is Taj Galbert and I'm a trans person who was born and raised here in Connecticut. Um, if I did not successfully secure gender affirming care back in two thousand nineteen, I would not be here to speak with you today. Our identities have been openly challenged in court for longer than I've been able to follow. Despite this, Connecticut has stood strong in protecting the rights of transgender people like me, who would not be able to survive without the care that I was afforded. I've lived below the poverty line for the majority of my life. If we were in one of the few states where, if we weren't in one of the few states where a transition has been consistently covered by state insurance. I would not be here to speak with you today. If I were living in the same states as some of my family down south, my very identity would be deemed nonexistent. There are so many trans people in Florida, Texas, North Carolina, or any other state that has become ground zero for this anti-trans agenda who already have. What should be their right to see a healthcare provider not just to transition, but to safely receive regular checkups and reproductive care. Has been stripped before their very eyes. Their only hope to see another day are states like ours, who stand strong in their values and commit to protecting transgender citizens. Their care should be in their own hands, between them and their provider and not at the mercy of a state who would rather fight a culture war. Than acknowledge that they deserve the same rights as their cisgender peers. This bill would not just protect me as a transgender individual here in Connecticut. It would not just protect the providers who administer lifesaving care and support transgender people throughout their transitions. It won't just support, it won't just protect the people in Connecticut who are in need of productive care. It would protect our fellow citizens who have no other option but to come to our state to receive the care that they should be given nationwide. It would show other states that being transgender will not be criminalized and that we will not punish our doctors for doing what is right by medical and ethical standards. If my indo- indoctrinologist, my therapist, my PCP or anybody else on my care team were persecuted for giving me the treatment that I needed. I would not be here to speak with you today. It is imperative that we do all we can to protect our most vulnerable and the providers who keep them alive. We need to pass Bill HB seven one thirty-five to secure the future of providers and the receivers of gender affirming care. Thank you and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Comment or question for members of the committee, comment or question for members of the committee? See now, thank you very much for joining us today, provide your testimony. Beth Hamilton.
Good morning, Senator Winfield, Representative Staschstrom and distinguished members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Beth Hamilton and I am the Executive Director of the Connecticut Alliance to End Sexual Violence. The alliance is the state's coalition of community based sexual assault crisis programs and service centers who provide crisis intervention. And support for survivors of sexual violence, including twenty-four seven hotlines, counseling, support groups, accompaniments and advocacy. And hospital, police and court settings, legal representation and post conviction services. Last year, the alliance provided nearly thirty-five thousand hours of services to more than seven thousand five hundred survivors across our state. Sexual violence is a public health epidemic. The CDC reports that one in four girls and one in twenty boys experienced sexual violence in childhood. And those rates continue to rise throughout our lifetimes, especially among the vulnerable. The consequences are devastating, survivors face increased risks of chronic illness, substance use, homelessness, lower educational attainment and significant economic hardships. The alliance strongly supports SB seven two three six in totality, which would increase support for survivors seeking justice and healing. While promoting long-term stability and well-being. I'm going to highlight one recommendation, which is to add victims of sexual assault and human trafficking to the state's listed protected classes. Some of the most common needs of survivors we work with following sexual violence include flexibility for counseling, medical and victim services appointments. Leave to participate in criminal or civil legal proceedings. Time off to support, to support a child who's experienced abuse, the ability to relocate or adjust their hours for safety. Or their housing, excuse me, for safety. Workplace accommodations to maintain safe and stable employment and protections to avoid encountering the person who harmed them at work. Currently, victims of domestic violence are the only victims of crime granted protections in employment, housing, public accommodations and credit transactions. Under Public Act twenty-two dash eighty-two. However, victims of sexual violence face significant challenges after experiencing crime that can impact every facet of their lives. The alliance also supports expanding the existing requirements for all state employees to complete a one-hour virtual training developed by CHRO. And expanding the CHRO requirements for all employers with three or more employees to post information about our resources available to victims. Expanding these requirements to include sexual assault and trafficking survivors can help to mitigate victim blaming, shame and stigma. And help to create workplaces where survivors feel safe and comfortable working with others to address their needs, thank you for your time and leadership.
Thank you. Comment or question, Representative Fishbarn?
Thank you, uh, good morning, Beth, nice to see you. Beth, I want to ask you, um. Do you have the language in front of you?
I do not, but I can go grab it if you'd like.
No, it's, I'll read it, so. The, the commission, right? It's the council is the, is the appropriate word. In line thirty-one, it says the governor shall appoint, um, and it's expanding.
Membership.
Three to four. Members. And then it says, one of whom shall be a resident of this state. That would assume, I mean, as read. That three of his appointees would not be residents of this, this state?
As a member of the Trafficking Persons Council and one of the tri-chairs, I think pretty much everyone around that table is a resident of the state. In fact, I can't think of anybody, um, who is not, I might be incorrect in saying that, but I, I think the majority of us who are members are from the state. Um, I'm not sure about the intention of that piece, but I do believe that everyone who is currently a part of the group, uh, is a member, uh, excuse me, is a citizen of the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, I would. I mean, if there's a problem with the council, how it's made up, which I'm hearing there isn't. I, I would require that all of them be residents of the state, right? So I don't, I don't know what machinations are going on in the background, but. Clearly, this would allow the governor to appoint people to a council service in Connecticut. That are not residents of Connecticut and, and I've got. Problems with that, so I'm just, I'm going to star that, um, because I don't know what's going on there. Towards the end of the bill, um. You know, I guess we get to a point in our existence that everyone is a protected class, but. In lines one sixty-nine to one seventy-five, it has to do with negotiating the sale or rental. Of, um, a dwelling. And right now. It's illegal. To utilize status as a victim of domestic violence in the course of that negotiation, that offer. And you're asking for, you're advocating to add status as a victim of sexual assault. Or status as a victim of trafficking in persons, I recognize that. But looking at the next section and, and the many sections thereon. The domestic violence protection is not there. Yet we have the addition of sexual assault or victim trafficking persons in all of those sections. Can you explain to me how? We got to this place?
I, I did not write the legislation, uh, what I can say is that our recommendation would be to create parity. So as the alliance, I would recommend that you would include all victims of gender based violence in those categories, I'm not sure why it was written in the way that it was though, sir.
I appreciate that, because at least at one point, the legislature thought it was just appropriate to include. Victims of domestic violence for one of these sections. And to exclude it from all of these, and yet we have wholesale changed with regard to these new protected classes, so. I don't know where that. That comes from. The, um, in lines three fifty-seven through three sixty-five, this has to do with a noose. Um, any person who places a noose or simulation thereof on public property. Now, at least in my experience, um. The utilization of a noose is a hearken back to the South lynchings. Is there some sort of? Connection between a noose and sexual assault or trafficking in persons?
I don't necessarily think that there's an explicit connection, perhaps there are crimes that could take place, uh, that would have to do with victims who have other identities. However, I believe that that, as well as there's a section around, uh, discrimination by state agencies, um, those include all other. Uh, protected classes, so sexual, uh, sexual orientation, gender identity, all those other pieces, uh, race, class, sex are included there. So my belief would be, as I read it, just that it was including all of the other places that any protected classes were listed out.
Yeah, I just don't see that, can I, I understand a lot of that is existing language. But I don't see the connection between a noose and somebody being blind, for instance, I mean. I would think public policy wise that we would want to. Prohibit. Perhaps punish. Individuals that use a symbol such as a noose to intimidate somebody of a particular race. Because there, there is a, a connection. But I don't see expanding this to all these other things, um. I don't know if somebody just, you know, dropped the words in every section. But it just, it doesn't seem to make sense to me, but, um, thank you for the exchange and thank you for your testimony, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comment or question for members of the committee, Representative Gilchrist?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, hi Beth, thank you so much for all your work. To build off what the good representative was saying and go back to the council membership, I think what might be intended, uh, with the addition of the, the resident language. Which of course could be edited, um, is to address the fact that the council had someone who represents, um. A survivor, could you speak to the importance of having that voice, but the nuance that we're trying to hit with this?
Absolutely, so one of the things that's critical to have, uh, on a council like that is folks with lived experiences. However, we want to, uh, avoid tokenism, we want to avoid making people feel like they have to retell, um, their trauma or share that in any setting. Uh, that would not be, uh, wanted or appropriate for that person. And so part of the nuance of that language is creating a space where a survivor could join us, but was not beholden to the group to only speak as a survivor. Or to have to share their experiences in ways or in depths that they're not comfortable with. Wonderful, and I look forward to continued conversation to get the language right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Comment or question for members of the committee, comment or question for members of the committee, if not, thank you for joining us. Leora Maddison.
Uh, hello distinguished members of the Judiciary Committee, uh, I'm feeling kind of nervous about this. Uh, my name is Leora Madison, I'm from South Bay, Connecticut. I am a transgender woman and I am a proud member of the LGBT QIA community. Whose rights were fought for by transgender people and I owe transgender people my rights. And I am here to testify in strong support of HB seven one three five. An act concerning the provision of reproductive and gender affirming healthcare services to patients. Considering the many, many attacks on transgender people on the federal level, including attempts to define transgender people out of existence, that my trans, I speak as someone with many transgender friends and family, and my transgender friends and family are terrified. Some have lost, have just lost the ability to get passports. Others are very concerned that the necessary and life-saving medical care will be made illegal. And considering, and in this political climate, there's increased risk of the already-present discrimination and violence and harassment against transgender people. Considering this political climate, the very least the state of Connecticut can do is to enact legislation to ensure it will protect providers of transgender healthcare to so that the so transgender people in Connecticut and elsewhere, that they matter, that they have value, and that there would be states taking a stand against this discrimination and these attacks. And that the necessary healthcare will be preserved. And with any healthcare, yes, there's always a, for any form of healthcare whatsoever, there's always a risk of regret. But that's, but transgender healthcare, the regret rates are very low, and that to not be used to deny healthcare or to allow attacks on healthcare for people who need it, especially from astroturf organizations that do not represent most trans people. Additionally, considering the attacks on abortion care on the federal level and in many states, which is also a religious freedom issue. I'm personally Jewish. Judaism does allow abortion and has different views on the matters than Christianity. And often these attacks on reproductive healthcare are based on very Christian religious views and/or separation of church and state issue and/or religious freedom issue for non-Christians and Christians who don't happen to say that particular interpretation of Christianity. As well as an issue of bodily autonomy, Connecticut could take the lead in protecting the providers of reproductive health from these attacks on the federal level and on other states. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? Questions or comments? Seeing none. Thanks for taking the time to be with us this morning. Leta Boylan.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Leta Boylan, and I am, by training and experience, a psych nurse. From 2017 until December of last year, I worked as an agency nurse at a taxpayer-funded facility on both the adult and youth psych units. Many days on youth psych, every single minor female patient was trans identified. It was unusual for us to have no trans patients on a given day. Most teenagers experience suicidal ideation at some point. This is not a great part of the human experience, but it is not an uncommon one. If a child who is struggling discloses suicidal ideation at school, it starts an unceasing cascade of interventions which occur without parental input. School staff are legally obligated to report to law enforcement, who will remove the child to the ER, obtain a 72-hour hold, and then deliver the minor to a facility like mine. All of this is done without parental consent and sometimes without parental contact. The administration at my former employer had an unwritten but brutally enforced policy that we were to call the kids whatever they wanted and that we were to not inform the parents of their children's desire to socially transition. Children as young as 11 years old, wanting to both impress and fit in with their somewhat older peers, would frequently change their names and pronouns, and this would be kept a secret from parents. Professionals of perceived authority who had already proven that they could override the wishes of the child's parents were now also in the business of hiding things from parents. There is no acknowledgement on the part of administrators who never interact with patients that affirming a cross-sex gender identity in children is not a psychologically neutral act and in fact starts another unstoppable cascade of interventions, but this one ends in permanent sterility, disrupted endocrine system, sexual dysfunction, mutilated genitalia, and an increased risk of completed suicide. To a person, every single trans-identified minor female patient that I took care of described herself as either neurodivergent, same-sex attracted, or a survivor of sexual assault. Every single one. Some girls were all three, most were on self-harm precautions and presented with significant scarring. Secret social transition is iatrogenic harm. The lack of legal guidance around this issue has perpetrated an environment where such bankrupt standards of care are permitted. Any medical professional who claims otherwise is ethically compromised. The trust that parents and families put in us to care for their beloved children is an awesome responsibility, and yet we have lied to them. How will they ever trust us again? Due to my professional experience working with trans youth, I urge you to oppose HB 7135.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none. Thanks for being here. Lucy Autumnson.
Hello, and thank you to the co-chair, Senator Winfield, Representative Staff Strom, and the members of the committee. My name is Lucy Autumnson, and I support HB 7135, which would protect healthcare professionals who provide gender-affirming or reproductive care from out-of-state legal persecution. I'm a trans woman, and I receive gender-affirming care from an in-state provider I trust very much. But many other states are passing bans on the care I and others like me need, forcing many healthcare professionals to leave those places and cutting off many people in those states from the care they need. We should protect the healthcare providers already in our state, as well as the ones coming to our state from these hostile laws. This is an issue about control over our bodies. Women and trans people in other states are being told that they must give birth or that they must allow an unwanted dominant sex hormone to change their bodies in irreversible ways because it is true that sex hormones change your body, but it is also true that like, if I stop taking HRT, it would also change my body in an irreversible way, and that would be very harmful to me. What is the end result of these invasions into our bodily autonomy? State control of everyone's self-expression. An example is a bill introduced in Arkansas this year, HB 1668. It would ban hairdressers from giving gender-nonforming haircuts to minors, which I think is ridiculous and wrong. How people present themselves, what haircut they have, and what is done to their own bodies is between people, their doctors and their parents. And they should remain free to make these choices for themselves. So I urge this committee to please vote yes on HB 7135 to protect doctors and other healthcare professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ma'am, thanks for being here this morning. Angel Foster.
Good morning, distinguished members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Dr. Angel Foster, and I am from Somerville, Massachusetts. I'm the co-founder of the Massachusetts Medication Abortion Access Project, or the MAP, the first shield law practice in the United States. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify in strong support of HB 7135. Although Connecticut passed the first shield law in the country, in June of 2022, the Massachusetts Legislature passed the first comprehensive shield law. What makes it comprehensive is that it effectively redefines the location of telemedicine care. If the clinician is licensed in Massachusetts, resides in Massachusetts, and practices for Massachusetts, for the purposes of medication abortion care provided by telemedicine, the patient is considered a resident of Massachusetts. In September of 2023, we launched the MAP, a medical practice designed specifically to comport with the Massachusetts Shield Law and all laws, policies and regulations related to both abortion and telemedicine in the Commonwealth. In the last year and a half, we have cared for more than 18,000 patients. We're now providing medication abortion care to about 2,500 patients a month. We are meeting a critical need. About one-third of our patients are from Texas, and 95% of our patients reside in states with abortion bans, first trimester gestational age restrictions, or telemedicine bans. We're able to care for these patients and help them obtain the abortions they want, need and deserve because the Massachusetts Shield Law explicitly protects telemedicine providers, and we have strong backing from the agencies, including the Governor's Office, the Attorney General's Office, and the Department of Public Health in our state. It's a privilege to be able to do this work and offer high-quality, affordable abortion care to so many patients. However, we need more states with comprehensive shield laws, and we need more shield law providers. The more providers we have, the more we will be able to normalize shield law provision and support each other. We will also collectively be able to care for more patients. We at the MAP would love to share the lessons we have learned with clinicians in Connecticut who are interested in creating a shield law practice, and there are resources available for new shield law providers to begin offering essential reproductive healthcare to abortion seekers throughout the country. On behalf of the MAP, I strongly urge the Judiciary Committee and the Connecticut General Assembly to support HB 7135. By strengthening Connecticut's shield law protections with these added provisions for telemedicine providers, Connecticut will be able to offer a critical layer of defense for its dedicated and compassionate reproductive healthcare workforce during this national public health crisis that is our post-Roe reality. Thank you for your time and consideration of this important bill, and I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? Representative Fishburne. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. Oh, it's still morning. Good morning, ma'am. I just wanted to ask you, you're in Massachusetts, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that like through the pandemic and afterwards, you know, we're permitting licensed providers in Connecticut to provide telehealth services, but I'm unaware that we permit, because we have no control over a provider who's licensed solely in Massachusetts from providing those services to Connecticut residents. Can you educate me with regard to that?
So because of the shield law, Massachusetts-trained licensed Massachusetts medication abortion providers can provide telemedicine abortion care to residents of any part of the United States, including Connecticut. Now, the MAP, we do occasionally provide care to patients from Connecticut, but Connecticut has a more robust reproductive health system and has laws that are protective of abortion rights. And so patients don't generally avail themselves of care from our service, but they certainly can.
So I'm just trying to figure out how, when Massachusetts has no authority to pass any law that affects the state of Connecticut. So you're saying that Massachusetts passed a law that allows providers that are solely licensed in Massachusetts to provide telehealth services to Connecticut residents?
Correct. So the Massachusetts Shield Law protects providers, helpers and funders from criminal, civil and licensure penalties for offering legally-protected reproductive health and gender-affirming care. In the case of telemedicine, what that means is that if the clinician is licensed in Massachusetts, is physically in Massachusetts, and is a resident of Massachusetts, that the patient that that clinician is serving is considered a resident of Massachusetts for the purpose of that care. So what it effectively has done is defined the location of telemedicine care as with the clinician, as opposed to being with the patient.
Okay, well, I mean, as I see our attorney general filing lawsuits all over the country, I would hope that he would sue Massachusetts. Because we have no, I mean, if that provider commits malpractice or something like that, Connecticut can't revoke the license, and that's the problem. So I guess you're in support of the language that I had asked one of the earlier speakers about, that in lines 30 through 31, it says regardless of whether the patient was physically located in this state at the time the services were provided, you're in support of Connecticut adopting that language?
I am. And to be clear, I'm not a lawyer, but it is my understanding that that language would bring Connecticut in alliance with the eight states, including Massachusetts, that currently have a comprehensive shield law, including in New England alone, Maine, Vermont, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts.
Yeah, everything's lawful done by a legislature until found unlawful by a court. But, you know, we do have states' rights, and I certainly am troubled by Massachusetts claiming that they're stepping into our licensing area. But thank you for your testimony here today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Further questions or comments? If not, thanks for being with us. Tom Cody. Tom Cody with us? Okay, how about Catherine McKenzie?
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Catherine McKenzie, and I am a board-certified internist with knowledge and expertise about female genital mutilation cutting. I am the director of Yale Center for Asylum Medicine. I have practiced on the faculty of Yale School of Medicine for over 24 years, 25 years. I live in Connecticut, in New Haven, and am a proud resident of Connecticut for over 25 years. FGMC is defined by the World Health Organization as procedures that intentionally alter or cause injury to the female genital organs for non-medical reasons. The resulting genital changes are classified by the WHO into four types based on the genital parts that are removed or altered, including the clitoris, clitoral hood, labia minora and labia majora. Women of any age can potentially be subjected to this procedure, but most often children between the ages of eight and 12 undergo the procedure. When I have performed evaluations on women who are subjected to FGMC as children, they describe the event as traumatic and painful. Many state that they were restrained with their legs held open while their genitals were cut. None of the women I have examined had anesthesia during the FGMC, and none described that it was done in a medical setting. Potential short and long-term complications associated with FGMC include pain, infections, scarring, acute and chronic urinary issues, menstrual problems, infertility, sexual dysfunction, inability to have screening pap smears, and increased risk of obstetric complications. Psychological harms include fear of having sexual intercourse, post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety and depression. Education of healthcare providers about FGMC is essential, as not all providers are familiar with it and therefore may not be aware that a patient they care for has undergone it or is at risk of FGMC. For this reason, I suggest that the proposed bill be amended to include the stipulation that the state health commissioner develop and administer a program of education for the prevention of FGMC. In addition, the bill should cover all four types of FGMC. Given the potential for long-term medical and psychological harm from FGMC, I believe strongly it is our duty to protect children residing in Connecticut who may be at risk of this procedure. It is my opinion as a medical provider of patients who have survived FGMC that raised bill 1438 should be adopted with the amendments noted above. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Fishburne. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I admit, it's an uncomfortable conversation.
Yes, and I should have started by mentioning.
No, I, you know, I come from, you know, a different perspective and lack of knowledge and all that stuff. But I know in the language that it only makes the, it appears the one who performs the act, the bad person. You would agree, it says performing female genital mutilation is a Class D felony. So I would expect that if a medical provider did it, they would be found to be liable under this.
So I'm the physician, not the attorney, but that is my understanding. I would defer to some of my legal colleagues.
Sure.
Just clarify that.
Do you know who in particular is going to testify?
I can let you know.
Okay.
I know we have more people coming up. I'm sorry.
No problem. I just, I hear that, and then those people don't show up, so I just.
And I apologize.
No, not at all. I just note that that's what it says. It says performing female genital mutilation is a Class D felony. So my concern is, does it go far enough? You know, because we hear about human trafficking, right? So someone who brings a child or, you know, coerces whatever, I think should have.
Be liable as well.
Yeah, right? Because it appears that it's only whoever performs, which you indicated, sometimes these are non, in a non-medical setting.
Yes, absolutely.
So that's more than likely not going to be a doctor, so to speak.
It may not be a doctor. I agree.
So that's all I just wanted to, you know, tease out of you.
Well, I'd be glad to. Well, I'd be glad to, uh, reply to you and get back with those details if it's not clarified further at these hearings.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested in learning, um, in the experience of those that have run across this.
Yes.
What the, the track is, you know, who? Because I, I don't know everything and, you know, who gets involved in? This activity.
Well, there, for example, in Michigan in two thousand seventeen, there was, um, a physician who was a licensed physician. Doing these procedures, doing FGMC after hours in her clinic. So that's an example of a clinician doing it here in this country. I think in other countries, it's less likely to be medicalized.
And I would think in situation like that, you have an adult of some sort, whether it be parent or guardian.
Yeah.
Bringing the child.
Yes.
You know, because I don't see kids walking around and, you know, on Twitter saying, you know, I want to go through this.
Yes.
This procedure, so.
Well, you're, you're correct. I mean, usually there is a family member who is, uh, supporting the FGMC. And, um, making sure that it's done either sometimes by a medical professional, but often by someone who's not medically trained. Yes.
And as a medical professional, can you just, you know, one of the things that I hear from a lot of my colleagues is. That this is, um, similar to circumcision and, um, can you speak to why this is different?
From male circumcision?
Yeah.
So, so, uh, you know, I'm here specifically to speak about female genital mutilation cutting. Uh, uh, I would say that there are some, there's some evidence that there are some medical benefits to male circumcision. And there are no medical benefits to FGMC.
Okay, so that's the distinction that I can point.
That's one distinction, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes, definitely. Okay.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Um, Melissa Combs. Melissa Combs. Hannah Hussey. Hannah Hussey.
Good morning. Good morning, Senator Winfield, Representative Staff Strum, and distinguished members of the Committee on Judiciary. My name is Hannah Hussey and I'm a staff attorney at GLBTQ Legal Advocates and Defenders, also known as GLAD Law. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony in support of HB seven one three five. An act concerning the provision of reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services to patients. GLAD Law appreciates Connecticut's leadership on issues of LGBTQ and reproductive rights. Including its previous passage of shield legislation to protect providers from attacks by individuals or entities in other states. Since the passage of Connecticut's existing shield law three years ago. The national climate has continued to shift. Increasing the challenges that providers and patients face in delivering and accessing care. HB seven one three five would strengthen the state's existing shield law to meet this moment. Approximately half of all states have banned or restricted families from accessing safe, effective, and medically, medically necessary healthcare for their transgender children. Six states have made it a felony to provide certain forms of medically necessary care to transgender young people. These actions mirror the more than nineteen states that restrict or ban access to abortion. Meanwhile, as other states have followed Connecticut's lead in adopting shield laws, many have done so. By enacting legislation with additional and clear protections. Ongoing litigation in Louisiana and Texas against a New York doctor. Based on allegations that the doctor provided abortion medication via telehealth. Underscores the tremendous threat that providers are under and the need for clear protections in state law. HB seven one three five would bring Connecticut's shield law in line with other states that have similarly. Taken actions to ensure that essential life-saving care remains available to patients and their families. It is well understood that denying medical care and support to trans young people puts them at increased risk of serious harm such as depression, self-harm. And suicidal thoughts and behaviors. By contrast, transgender youth who receive the medical care they need. As supported by families and recommended by doctors. Are better situated to thrive and to lead happy, healthy lives. By passing HB seven one three five, Connecticut can continue to show its commitment to these young people, their families, and to all individuals. Who benefit from reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services. GLAD Law supports this legislation. It is also available to support any necessary amendments to ensure that HB seven one three five is best able to respond to the threats. Uh, to healthcare and healthcare providers in the current climate. We propose a minor tweak to the definition of gender-affirming care as reflected in our written testimony, um, which I'll make sure is, is submitted. To align that definition with the fulsome definition of reproductive healthcare services contained in the current bill. GLAD Law hopes this committee will support this legislation and stand up for all patients in Connecticut. Thank you for your time and consideration.
You, questions from the committee? Seeing none, thanks for being with us. Uh, Jamie. Manor Rec Kisa?
Yeah.
Hey, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Chairs and members of the Judiciary Committee for the opportunity to submit testimony. In support of House Bill seven two three six. Uh, my name is Jamie Manor Kisa and I'm the Executive Director for Partnership to End Human Trafficking. We are the only adult housing provider in the state of Connecticut for victims and survivors of human trafficking. We opened our first home in, uh, January of twenty twenty-one. And we quickly opened a second home in January of twenty twenty-four. And we operate two homes in the state, one in Bridgeport and one in the greater Hartford region, both at confidential addresses. Um, through this work, we have seen a critical demand for services here in the state of Connecticut. In addition to safe housing, we provide wraparound community-based services and we operate a social enterprise business employing survivors in Fairfield, Connecticut. Um, in twenty twenty-four, we served over fifty survivors, individuals, um, through the provision of emergency to long-term housing, rental assistance, case management, employment. Over seventy-five percent of those individuals we served have expressed experiencing abuse and sex trafficking or exploitation as a minor. Um, I've worked in the field, uh, to share a little bit over fifteen years and this is a common. Um, statistic, uh, when you talk to survivors who have experienced trafficking that their abuse began as a minor. Um, particularly, we are in support of the affirmative defense for individuals who committed certain offenses as a direct result of being trafficked. And we believe it is a vital step forward. The reality is that survivors often come into contact with the criminal justice system before they are ever identified as a victim or offered services. Um, and arresting those individuals related to their exploitation. Um, is often related to the traffickers who coerce them into committing that crime. And I've worked with a number of individuals where this has been the case. Um, and they are, they are criminalized for actions that were not freely chosen. It creates lasting harm, reinforces cycles of abuse, and undermines the ability to provide. Restorative and healing services so that those young people, when they turn adults, do not continue to be exploited. Um, and to remain under the radar and, uh, in our communities, which is often the case. Given that we serve adults, we see countless individuals who have not received the proper care and healing that they deserve. So we support this bill and, um, uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? If not, um, thanks for being with us. Uh, Rosemary Lopez?
Good morning, co-chairs, Senator Winfield, Representative Staff Strum. Vice Chair Senator Flexer. Senator Gadkar Wilcox, and Representative Fucino and ranking members. And esteemed members of the Judiciary Committee. I am Rosemary Lopez, the Lead Woman's Legislative Policy Analyst at the Commission on Women, Children, Seniors, Equity, and Opportunity. I am here in support of Senate Bill fourteen thirty-eight. And House Bill seven two three six. As detailed in my written testimony. However, I want to take a moment to focus on Senate Bill fourteen thirty-eight. An act prohibiting female genital mutilation. Legislation that seeks to establish the mutilation of female genitalia of minors as a crime in Connecticut. FGM is a serious human rights violation. It has devastating. Physical, psychological, and social consequences for those subject to it. We must take a strong stand against this practice to protect our girls from harm and affirm their right to bodily autonomy and security. We commend this bill for establishing legal protections. But we urge the legislature to consider additional measures to enhance its enforcement. Such as including education and awareness. Training for professionals and support services for survivors. By pairing this legislation with comprehensive education awareness and survivor support initiatives. Connecticut can lead example in protecting vulnerable populations and preventing FGM in our communities. To date, forty-one states have passed laws banning FGM. Passing Senate Bill fourteen thirty-eight would align Connecticut with national efforts. And send a clear message that our state will not tolerate such violations of human rights. We also do not want Connecticut to become a drive-through state. We sincerely thank the Judiciary Committee for its leadership in addressing this urgent issue. And for taking action to protect young girls in our state. Our commission stands ready to collaborate with lawmakers, advocates, and community organizations to ensure the success of this legislation. And the broader fight to end FGMC. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let me just ask, uh, it's probably, you probably the second or third person's talked about an education component, but what would that look like? What would the cost of that be? How, how would that be implemented?
I don't have cost numbers. Um, the coalition did speak to the Department of Public Health at one point. When we first started addressing this issue. And they were on board and providing some type of assistance in educating. So I'm assuming. We're hoping and counting on their budget numbers.
Okay, all right. Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess it would be helpful to kind of have some.
I could, I could get some information to, to you all.
Great, thanks. Further questions or comments? If not, thanks for being with us. Uh, Amanda. Cor- Corin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman and committee members. My name is Amanda Corcoran and I'm a certified nurse midwife here in Connecticut. I've worked in healthcare for twenty-one years, eighteen of those specializing in women's and reproductive healthcare. As a provider of comprehensive gynecologic reproductive and LGBTQIA care, I strongly support HB seven one three five. In today's post-dob world, there are huge strains on OB-GYN providers. Prior to Dobbs, the U.S. was already experiencing a significant shortage of OB-GYN providers due to an aging workforce. Lower pay, higher rates of litigation, and increase in costs of malpractice insurance, which can be as high as two hundred thousand dollars per provider per year. Now our stressors include things like what if I lose my license? What if the care I provide sends me to jail? And will I feel guilt if I cannot provide the best care for my patients because of federal limitations? According to the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, there are up to eight thousand fewer OB-GYNs currently than what is needed. And that number can rise as high as twenty-two thousand by twenty fifty. We've long tried to fill this gap with CNMs such as myself. But as of twenty twenty-two, even CNM numbers are declining as rapidly as twenty-five percent over the last five years. As we watch providers in other states being targeted, fined, and even jailed for providing access to abortion and reproductive care. Why would anyone want to join us without protections for performing life-saving and evidence-based medicine? This bill also provides continued protections to healthcare providers of the gender diverse and trans population. As someone who is fortunate enough to provide safe, inclusive, and non-judgmental gynecologic care to these individuals. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of protecting this access to care. It's not uncommon for patients to tell me in their visits how horribly they've been treated by medical professionals. How many times they've been turned away for care. Or how difficult it is for them to even get the courage to come in for their potentially life-saving preventative cancer screenings. By ensuring that providers that are willing to create space for these incredible individuals are protected. We can help ensure access to care for them and all patients with reproductive and gender needs for years to come. Healthcare providers should not be penalized for providing evidence-based, state-approved standards of care. And HB seven one three five will support this so we can continue to keep supporting people of Connecticut. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? Uh, Representative Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you for, well, it's now afternoon, good afternoon. Um. I take it from your testimony that you practice in this space?
Yes, I do. So I'm a certified nurse midwife. I currently only practice gynecology, but prior to that, I was delivering babies at Yale. Um, and also providing gynecologic care.
Okay, I'm, I'm talking specifically, um, seven one three five has to do with the gender-affirming healthcare. You practice in that space?
So although I do not perform, uh, gender-affirming care and that I don't prescribe, uh, cross-sex hormones, I do take care of these patients in the gynecologic realm. So many, um, trans men and non-binary or gender diverse patients still require, uh, gynecologic care. Um, and. You know, but part of what I do in that field is caring for them and. Sometimes we care for also trans women. And if there were, you know. If there were to be legislation against that, I think that would really limit our ability to, to provide that care.
No, I appreciate that and you're, you're one of the few, um. Mental, well, not, medical providers that. Has appeared here today, so I just wanted to take the opportunity, um. When somebody. Says they want to, um. Well. I guess we're dealing minors here. So. Have you had occasion to be involved with minors that have been involved in this process?
Yes, I have.
And in your experience, um. Has a minor ever said? Um, I don't want to do this or, you know, start to go down this road and. And perhaps change their mind or the mind of the individual that's having them do this?
Sure, that's a great question. So, um, in my experience, I haven't had, um, a minor. Specifically come to me and explain that they've, you know, changed their minds. Um. What I will say is many, um, young people who identify as, as trans or gender non-binary. Will, um, sometimes not sort of fully commit. They'll sort of say, I'm feeling like I may be this way. And in my experience, the providers that are involved in their care, so. The endocrinologists, the pediatricians, the, um, gender medicine providers. Do frequent and continued assessment, follow-up, and I've never seen a case. Where they've, uh, pressured or forced or encouraged anyone to do really anything. Um, I think that. The kids and their parents are very involved, um, in the decision-making and. In my experience, I see a lot of trans joy.
Okay, I, I appreciate your perspective. Uh, um. Does the industry require? Someone who, um, especially a minor is potentially. Going to engage in this to seek some sort of mental health treatment? Not that anybody has an issue, but. Um, you know, I hear about. Mental health, uh, in the backend, um, so I'm looking for the gatekeeper function. What does the industry do?
Sure, so again, I'm, I'm not a gender medicine specialist, but what I can tell you is that, uh, all of the patients that I know. That are, um, trans or gender diverse, absolutely are also, um. In collaboration with mental health care providers and many of these systems, like again, the one at Yale. Um, includes, uh, therapists and psychiatrists and primary care and, uh, gender-specific medicine, endocrine. So it's a collaborative, uh. You know, group effort as far as their care goes. Um, I know that it's very encouraged and in certain realms, um, especially with patients that are on, uh, state insurance. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure if that's still a requirement, but I know, um. At least in the past, it has, uh, been a requirement if they wanted to do, um, surgeries, uh, related to their gender.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, thanks for being with us. Catherine Saris?
Good afternoon, honorable members of the committee. My name is Catherine Saris and I am a resident of Connecticut. I am here to testify in opposition to HB seven one three five. I testified in person about a week and a half ago and submitted written testimony regarding SB thirteen eighty. And at that hearing, I. And at that hearing, I told my story regarding my struggle with gender dysphoria and its roots in my childhood sexual trauma. I will not repeat that testimony, but I will note how fitting it is that today. We are also hearing testimony regarding human sex trafficking and another bill regarding the mutilation of female genitalia. These are actually interrelated issues because gender dysphoria, genital mutilation. And the expansion of the shield law as presented in HB seven one three five all most strongly affect minors. And all deal with issues that marginalize the female population. I have heard proponents of this bill claim that science proves the need for gender-affirming care. And I don't believe that. I asked them to prove it. The American Society of Plastic Surgeons issued a statement this past August. Explaining that, quote, "There is considerable uncertainty as to the long-term efficacy. For the use of chest and genital surgical inventions for the treatments of adolescents with gender dysphoria," unquote. Numerous studies from Europe, particularly the Nordic countries and the UK. Have confirmed that gender interventions and treatments to minors are dangerous and are causing much harm. Moreover, a recent study involving fifty-six US healthcare organizations and over ninety million patients. Analyzed data over a twenty-year period from February of two thousand three to two thousand twenty-three. In this study, they examined, quote, "suicide attempts, death, self-harm, and post-traumatic stress disorder." Within five years of the index event, unquote. A stunning three point forty-seven percent of those who transitioned were treated for suicide attempts. Versus zero point two nine percent for non-transitioned patients. Proponents of this shield law expansion will cause already traumatized victims from out of state, mostly minors. To have to surmount nearly impossible hurdles as plaintiffs. Also, I hear over and over people claiming that there are not very many detransitioners, but that is a fallacy. No one is collecting the data, so we don't know how many transitioners there, detransitioners there are. There are very few people that have the courage to come up here and speak in front of a body like this, who've gone through this kind of sexual. Trauma, then trauma of being, changing their gender, gender transition, then having to come back. It takes a very special and a very dedicated person to be able to do that. And there are just not very many people who can surmount all that kind of trauma to come up here and tell you about it. But I can tell you that in a couple of years, you're gonna have a ton of young, angry people. Because most of the transitioners that are coming forward right now are people who've gotten treatment in the last seven to eight years. We are talking about a population of seventeen to twenty-five-year-olds. Those are the main people. Thank you very much for listening to my testimony.
Thank you. Representative Fishman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming back again. Um, I'm glad you came back again. Your presentation was very unique from the, uh, the journal. Am I gonna see that on eBay later on today?
I have no idea.
That was great. Um, so I appreciate your testimony and that's all I wanted to say. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question or comment from, uh, members of the committee? Representative DiCaprio.
Give me for my voice here. I'm trying to get over a cold. Thank you, Catherine, for your testimony too. When you mentioned about minors, do you have, are there, are there any statistics, uh, that you can cite? Uh, you know, when you said there's mostly affecting minors?
The, the gender transition surgeries and things like that that are going, coming through are, I mean, basically. Puberty blockers can only be administered during puberty, right? And that only happens to minors. So that's a vast margin of this. And then, um, the, I don't have any statistics in front of me. But there are others who will be testifying after me, or, um, I'm sure you can go back to talk to Simon Amaya Price. And he will have very strong statistics. I'm an artist. I'm not a statistics person. That's why I write everything down and make sure I double-check it. Um, but he or some of the others might have better statistics, but I know that puberty only happens once. So that's mostly the population that we're talking about here.
Thank you for that. Um, I'll look, I'll look forward to, uh, and maybe we can get, get some statistics for the committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Representative Volde.
Volada.
Representative Volde. Okay, uh, well.
Hello? Sorry, did you call me?
Representative, are you able to ask your question?
Oh, well, I think we're going to move forward because I don't think we actually have him able to.
I'm sorry, now I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize. I've got two meetings going on and I, I'm so sorry. Catherine, I was, thank you for your testimony. I was looking for written testimony. Did you submit?
I have not submitted yet. I will submit later today and I'll try to put some links for specific, um, stats in there for you.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Comment or question from members of the committee? Comment or question? Seeing no more, thank you very much for joining us again.
Thank you, Senator Winfield.
Catherine Saris. You know, it happens. Uh, A- Alistair Neeson? Alistair Neeson. Uh, there you are. One second. You, you should be seated, seated here. Yep, no problem, no problem.
You can say.
It's okay.
Thank you. I walked right past it. Good afternoon. My name is Alistair Neeson. I'm a resident of Denbury, Connecticut, and I'm writing in strong support of HB seven one three five. A critical bill that will strengthen Connecticut's shield law and protect both providers and patients seeking essential reproductive and gender-affirming care. The fight to control our bodies and lives did not stop with the overturning of Roe v. Wade. And across the country, anti-abortion politicians have continued their attacks, not only restricting abortion care. In nineteen states, but also targeting those who provide and support reproductive healthcare. Similarly, the same forces that have sought to limit and access, limit access to life-saving medically necessary gender-affirming care. Particularly for transgender people, these restrictions deny families the right to make informed medical decisions. And undermine the health and well-being of vulnerable communities. The consequences of these actions, these attacks, sorry, disproportionately harm those already facing systemic barriers to care. Young people, black and brown individuals, LGBTQ plus people, and those with limited financial resources. No one should be denied net, mess, necessary medical care simply because of where they live or whether they can afford to travel. While Connecticut has been a t- a leader in protecting reproductive freedom and transgender healthcare. We must go further to ensure providers can continue offering care via telemedicine, including p- including to patients. From states that have banned these essential services. More than half of all abortions in the US are med- are medication abortions, safe and effective. And more often accessible through telehealth. Strengthening our shield law will protect Connecticut providers from hostile out-of-state enforcement actions. And allow them to continue providing this critical care. Connecticut must stand firm in protecting the rights of transgender youth and their families, access to medically necessary care without government interference. By supporting this bill, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that all people, no matter their gender, identity. Or income can make decisions about their own bodies and futures without political interference. I urge you to support this bill and continue making Connecticut a safe and compassionate place for all who need this care. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Comment or question from members of the committee? Comment or question from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us this afternoon. Jim Hugh. Good afternoon. You may testify when you are seated.
Good afternoon, members of the Ju- Judiciary Committee. My name is Jim and I'm from Nogato, Connecticut. I'm here today to testify in support of HB seven one three five, which will provide protections to providers of reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare. Let me start off by saying that, as you can all see, I do not have a uterus, nor do I need gender-affirming care. I am also not a healthcare provider who will be covered by this bill, only a resident of Connecticut who feels that it represents my values. It is comical to me that we have reached a point in our politics where doctors and nurses. Need to ask for protection for providing medical care because states like Texas are allowing private citizens to sue anyone who gets or provides abortions. It is comical to me that healthcare workers are facing legal and sometimes even death threats from people other than their patients. It is comical to me, if not for how sad it is. My dad was born in Taiwan, a country known for, for its tech and semiconductor industry. And a country that provides free universal healthcare. He's getting older now, and every time he goes to see a doctor, he asks me to help him find someone in America. He always says that the healthcare is simply better here. There is more advanced care available, more options for medication, more specialists. Some things are worth paying a higher price for. Throughout the country, we're seeing healthcare providers come under attack simply for taking care of sick people. Reproductive and gender-affirming care are just one piece of the puzzle. Doctors and nurses are being threatened just for giving people vaccines or suggesting sick people wear a mask. When that happens, healthcare workers leave the places that prosecute them and go to work in other states that protect them. The ones that stay often have to offer substandard care to avoid lawsuits. When clinics and hospitals are not adequately, adequately protected from frivolous lawsuits by ambulance chasers. They need to buy more expensive workplace insurance to sh- shield themselves, and they pass that expense down to patients and consumers. When I'm choosing a doctor for my family, I don't need the government to decide who we can see. Even though this bill addresses the kind of medical care that we aren't seeking. It's about fostering an environment that retains the best quality, most accessible healthcare possible for its residents. Instead of creating a brain drain of educated doctors and nurses. It's about keeping the costs of healthcare down for patients by protecting clinics and hospitals from partisan lawsuits. That have nothing to do with good care and everything to do with scoring political points. I'm proud that my dad chose to come to America and raise our family here. I'm proud to live in Connecticut because we have excellent pizza, we have a great education system, and we have access to world-class healthcare. I hope we continue to work to provide that, protect that access. And make our medical decisions based on science rather than fear and bigotry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Comment or question from members of the committee? Comment or question? Seeing none, thank you very much for joining us this afternoon. Leslie Wolfcannon. Welcome back. Uh, when you're seated, you may testify.
Thank you. I'm testifying against, uh, seven one three five. Since gender-affirming healthcare services in Connecticut's shield laws were added by a budget implementer. That portion of the act did not receive public comment or a hearing. So today you will hear from people testifying as to why gender-affirming healthcare services are problematic. And should not be protected by Connecticut's shield laws. People who regret their gender-affirming care regularly refer to themselves as detransitioners or desisters. The rate of detransition or desisting has recently been speculated. By a member of WPATH publicly to be as high as thirty percent. Can you imagine having your breasts removed as a treatment for gender dysphoria? Only to realize that you made a grave error as you matured and grew out of your dysphoria and wanted to start a family. It is very difficult to come to terms with the mutilation of your body. You feel humiliated and betrayed. The obstacles to coming to terms with your distress and initiating a cause of action are immense, but still maybe there is legal recourse. But any attorney who takes your case and sues a provider in Connecticut will have to weigh the severe penalties and deterrence in Connecticut's shield laws. Particularly Section fifty-two, five seventy-one M, which creates a civil cause of action for a countersuit. Any attorney will have to take extra time analyzing how the laws in their client's state compare with Connecticut's laws. Any determination of whether a similar claim would exist in Connecticut compared to the plaintiff's state is bound to be subjective. And riddled with complications and time-consuming analysis. Few attorneys will be able to take the case, and that is likely the purpose of the law, and that is unfair. There are minors and young women in Connecticut and from out of state who have had and continue to have their breasts removed. As part of gender-affirming care by Connecticut doctors. At least one Connecticut gender doctor was exposed for targeting, intending to target their services to children in states. That ban gender-affirming care. We should not be foreclosing or creating obstacles for these kids to receive compensation or pursue lawsuits. I've also included a myth fact sheet about gender-affirming care in Connecticut with my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment, question from members of the committee? Comment or question from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you for joining us again.
Thank you.
Uh, Dylan Doherty?
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Dylan Doherty. I am a transgender man and I am here in support of legislation HB seven one three five. This legislation is very important as I have experienced one of the many ways this bill can save lives. In May of twenty twenty-two, while I presented as female, I became pregnant with a baby boy. My plans were to carry my son to term and raise him. However, nature had different plans for both of us. There was a tear in my amniotic sac. I also developed placenta probia and low-lying placenta. Doctors informed me at the time, if I go into labor, my son and I would both lose our lives. My son, because he was premature and too young to survive, and myself due to blood loss from hemorrhaging. Doctors then offered me a life-saving procedure to save my life, a procedure called dilation and evacuation. They assured me that my life would be saved and the ability to live. Allowing doctors to perform this procedure not only saved my life, but gave me a second chance, the chance to live to my full, full potential. Continue to raise my children and watch them grow, and most of all, still have their parent. If this procedure was not an option and illegal to perform, I for sure would have lost my life. I would have been named wrong on a headstone and buried in a body that did not identify me. I was advised by doctors that not only has this procedure saved thousands of lives, but has the ability to save thousands more. We put our trust in safety in medical professionals to save our lives in life-or-death situations. When we are faced with, when they are faced with being criminalized or doing exactly that, saving the lives of those around them. It makes them, the, it makes the procedure which saved my life as well as others illegal. And there will be more lives lost than saved. That's exactly why they perform life-saving procedures like the one that saved my life that day. They deserve to be thanked, not criminally charged. This bill will save lives, and that is why I am in support of legislation HB seven one three five. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Uh, question or comment from members of the committee? Question or comment? Uh, if not, thank you very much for joining us and sharing your story. Jamie Reed.
Good morning. Thank you for your time today. My name is Jamie Reed and I am a whistleblower from a pediatric gender center. I hold a Masters of Science in Clinical Research, and I'm also the co-executive director of the LGB Courage Coalition. A national LGB advocacy organization. I am a lesbian, a Democrat, and I also was a previous clinical manager in a Planned Parenthood. Our testimony today is in opposition to seven one three five. We consider this bill to be a grave error. And we consider shield laws to be bills protecting those who have harmed or seek to harm children. The procedures wrongly known as gender-affirming care are really GNRH agonists, cross-sex hormones, and surgeries. And are practices that have been scaled back and are ending in many nations. Connecticut would be enshrining into law practices that will be considered in the next five years to have been grave, life-altering mistakes. We have already seen lawsuits from real harms across the country and these are only increasing. The American Academy of Pediatrics is currently being sued by young people who have been harmed by these interventions. The American Surgical Association has reviewed these procedures and has concluded that the evidence does not support the continued use. My organization understands these procedures to give young people puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and surgeries to be deeply homophobic. These procedures and these protocols were created and were rooted in regressive stereotypes about how men and women should behave and act. Stereotypes that target our community, young people who might grow up to be gays and lesbians, and vulnerable populations. Those with autism, trauma histories, and serious mental health concerns. We urge Connecticut to cease incorrectly tying reproductive healthcare to experimental procedures related to what we call gender. Tying these things together only harms women and. Tying these things together only harms women and will end up harming your state. We also do not believe that Connecticut should involve itself and any other state in this nation. We have successfully advocated in other states to end these harmful procedures, and when states try to intervene in other states through what is referred to as shield laws, we see this as a direct challenge to those states' rights to protect children. This will backfire on Connecticut, and if you have not reviewed the potential cost to your state and legal challenges in the future, you should. I worked inside this industry for nearly five years. I understand as an insider these procedures and became a legally recognized whistleblower because this is an industry harming young people. I filed a formal affidavit with my attorney general, I provided the evidence, and within six months, the centers in my states were closed. I urge your opposition to raise bill seven one three five. I open, I'm open to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, comment, question for members of the committee? Comment, question for members of the committee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and and thank you for your testimony. Jamie, are you there? Oh, there you are. Sorry, um, I I looked for written testimony. Did you submit any written testimony? I didn't see it if you did. If you could, that would be great, uh, particularly, uh, what state did you file that affidavit?
I'm from, I'm from the state of Missouri.
And whatever information you can submit on what you you were you were working in the industry for five years, whatever information you provide by way of your written testimony and that affidavit uh would be greatly appreciated.
I can do that.
Thank you so very much for your testimony and uh for your bravery in being a whistleblower. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, representative, comment, question for members of the committee? Uh, see you none. Thank you very much for joining us today. Crystal Rich. Crystal Rich. Jen Krasinski. Jen Krasinski. Rachel Connor.
Good afternoon, Senator Winfield, Representative Staffstrom, Senators Flexer and Gadkar Wilcox, Representative Fazino, Senator Kissel, Representative Fishline, and distinguished members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Rachel Connor. I am the former state representative for the hundred and forty-ninth district. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of House Bill seventy-one thirty-five, an act concerning the provision of reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare services to patients. In twenty twenty-two, in the wake of the overturning of Roe versus Wade by the Supreme Court, the Connecticut Legislature passed the Reproductive Freedom Defense Act, a first-of-its-kind shield law to protect Connecticut providers and patients. Since twenty twenty-two, abortion bans have been enacted in nineteen states. More than twenty-five states have banned or restricted families from accessing medically necessary healthcare for their transgender children, and six states have made it a felony to provide certain forms of medically necessary care to transgender people. Shield laws have been enabled tens of thousands of people in states with abortion bans or bans on telehealthcare to access timely, affordable medication abortion care from licensed medical providers. We must continue taking steps to make sure this care remains available and accessible. No out-of-state lawmaker should be able to dictate what care Connecticut providers can offer to their patients. Most importantly, medical professionals should be able to practice within the bounds of professional standards without fear of repercussions. Passage of House Bill seventy-one thirty-five will strengthen Connecticut's shield law and ensure that providers who are doing work that is legal in our state continue to be protected. Connecticut is leading, and I'm grateful that our state legislators are working to make sure that Connecticut is a safe haven for people seeking reproductive and gender-affirming healthcare. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Comment or question from members of the committee? Comment or question from members of the committee? If not, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Jared Ross. Jared Ross. Madison Iorfino? Or is that an, I I can't tell. Hello. Oh, you can tell us what it is.
Um, good afternoon, honorable members of the committee. My name is Madison Iorfino. Uh, it's Italian. Um, I'm here to support uh HB seventy-one thirty-five, which will empower the state to do everything it can to protect healthcare providers and ensure fair access to services like reproductive healthcare and gender-affirming care. I've been a citizen of Connecticut my whole life and have had access to trans healthcare that has helped me live happily as myself for the past half decade. Had this not been the case, I likely would not be here to speak today, a sentiment that is echoed throughout other testimonies. Of course, access to trans healthcare for me and many others has proven vitals for our ability to exist and be happy. Withholding of that care coupled with rampant anti-trans legislation both on a state level and other parts of the country and recently on a federal level has had an extreme adverse effect sorry, um, on the safety and well-being of trans youth. The Trevor Project's twenty twenty-three mental health survey indicates that twenty-three percent of trans men and seventeen percent of trans women have attempted suicide within that year. That number decreases considerably with access to affirming spaces and care, and as such, it is integral that we preserve this as best we can. It is also worth noting that a lack of protection will have significant adverse effects on reproductive care that have proven fatal in similar ways across the country. Last year, a mother in Texas died after doctors were unable to give her the resources necessary to complete a miscarriage or risk being convicted or losing their license. Had her autonomy been respected by the legislature, this death was easily preventable. Connecticut has the foundations to protect its people in a time of federal overreach. And I am a strong proponent of the idea that the autonomy of the people should be built upon consent and mostly devoid of regulation. This bill will enable protections for for both doctors and patients to give and get the care they need, even if it does not align with the ideals of the federal government. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, and sorry about the last name.
No, you're fine.
Comment or question for members of the committee? Comment or question? See you none. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Emily Scott.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking in favor of bill seven one three five. My name is Emily Scott, and I serve as pastor of First Presbyterian Church in New Haven. I'm a non-binary transgender person who has ministered for fifteen years with the transgender community. As a pastor and a Christian, my tradition holds that God created a beautiful diversity of human beings, and some of God's children are transgender. I want to back up a little bit and just talk about what it means to be transgender. To put it very simply, we are people who don't fit easily into the categories outlined for gender by society. And for some of us, our physical characteristics don't match up with who we know ourselves to be. This tension can create an inner conflict that can become unbearable. Many transgender people struggle with a medically defined condition that is known as dysphoria. It's an extreme anxiety that is created by gender identity conflict. And my spouse, who transitioned in the nineteen nineties, trans people, by the way, are not new. We've been around for a very long time. My spouse struggles with dysphoria, so I know firsthand that it is painful and real. It's critically important that transgender people have open access to gender-affirming care. This right, of course, is being threatened in states across our nation, creating an immoral and untenable situation for so many trans people who are seeking scientifically proven care, which is undertaken with much thought and care for both adults and for children. As a note, surgical care is not available to minors in Connecticut, so please do not listen to misleading comments about mutilation. And the National Library of Medicine reports a variety of studies that report a regret rate of less than one percent um around surgeries. Twenty percent of people regret having knee surgery, so a one percent regret rate is incredibly good. Trans healthcare should be defined by the trans community and the medical community. The fear and threat of legal prosecution for medical providers will create a chilling effect for people who are doing medically-backed work of providing affirming care. And we need more protections for providers providing this care, especially as trans people arrive in Connecticut from states where trans care is threatened or illegal. In ministry, I have seen firsthand the pain and suffering of congregants who can't access care for a variety of reasons. One of my congregants struggles with dysphoria, which has resulted in extreme depression and an inability to care for her own physical health. And as a result, she frequently visits the emergency room, sometimes um once or twice a month. With greater access to affirming care, those very costly visits could have been avoided. We have heard some accounts today implying that transition increases suicidality. Numerous studies show that suicide rates go down drastically for the majority of those who transition. Transgender people are a part of God's plan. They are people with unique gifts and perspectives who have much to offer our society, but we can only do so when our identity is affirmed, allowing us to thrive and to contribute to our communities. Placing legal protections around affirming care will mean that more transgender people receive regular medical care, resulting in better, better, better physical and mental health and lower costs for our state. From my perspective as a Christian and a pastor.
Thank you. Comment, question, comment, Representative Fishman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard a statistic in there about the detransitioning people. And you said that that percentage is one percent?
Generally cited as less than one percent.
Okay, when you say generally cited, what?
So the statistics that I was pulling, and I think there's a lot of controversy around statistics around trans people, and I think there's a lot of studies that are cited that are not legitimate. So it's important that we're really careful about where we pull those from. The statistic I pulled was from the National Library of Medicine, which is looking at several different studies. Um, so you could certainly look into that, and I could provide those um, that data if you would like.
Well, because to my knowledge, our, like, DPH in Department of Public Health in Connecticut doesn't require aggregate any figures with regard to that. Um, so if DPH isn't doing it, then a medical provider in Connecticut would not be required to report it. So I'm just a little concerned about, you know, because I hear, you know, thirty, thirty-five percent. That's a, that's a big difference, right? So if somebody starts to travel down this path and then just walks away from the the system, they they are who they are at that point, right? But there's no way, there's no way to to categorize that.
I think it's important that we remember that we're speaking, when it comes to surgical transition, about adults. And adults have decisions to make their own medical decisions, just as we make decisions about back surgery or knee surgery. Adults have the autonomy to make a decision about their own medical care in consultation with their doctor. So I think if the state begins to um oversee those choices, that's really not the role of the state. Um, again, it's a conversation between an individual and their doctor with a large body of medical research behind it.
However, it is the role of the state if it is represented to us that juveniles are coerced into doing something and that those juveniles, when they become adults, regret that.
Yeah.
Um, or perhaps they're on the cusp of juvenile to adult, and they decide not to do this. Or there's mental, you know, we've heard a lot of afraid of horribles about the mental health issues. About, you know, so government, which we are, we are a branch, I think has a right to step into that situation to stop those problems.
Well, again, to be clear, surgical interventions are not available for minors. So if you hear anything in the state of Connecticut about minors and surgery, it is false. This is not something that gender-affirming care is is um doing or promoting in the state of Connecticut at this time. Um, again, I'm not a doctor, I'm a pastor, but I have fifteen years of experience with folks who are trans. I think that we have some far-right uh narratives about minors that are being pushed uh in very specific ways in our nation and um really changing the conversation in a way that is um not related to fact. And we need to be very careful about that.
So.
But doctors generally don't push, pediatricians don't spend their time pushing minors into certain decisions. And from my experience with with parents of trans children, in general, trans parents are um need to be educated and convinced and to have a lot of conversation in order to assist their children in attaining gender-affirming care. There's not a lot of parents out there who are pushing their kids to be trans. It's in fact quite the opposite. So this is a question of um yeah, children working in consultation with pediatricians to receive the care that they need. That's the end of the story. There's medical regulations and and um, yeah, guidance about this that is well-proven. It's it's not about um opinion.
Okay, and I'm just trying to figure out, you made a lot of representations here. And I'm just trying to figure out, what is the basis of your knowledge that doctors are unable to perform surgical procedures upon minors in the state of Connecticut along with the lines of what we've heard about?
Well, you as a legislator would know that better than me, but it is not recommended treatment, to my understanding, so.
That's a little bit different than what you said. You said it doesn't happen in Connecticut, and it isn't allowed in Connecticut.
That is my understanding.
Okay, what's it an understanding based upon?
It's based upon my understanding of the law.
Okay.
Which you as a legislator should be familiar with.
I am.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I'm just, okay.
Yeah.
So then.
So that's a, an appearance of a question, and we can get an answer to that.
Hold on, I'm just going to uh give the admonishment that I give when these conversations kind of start going back and forth. Question is asked, then an answer is provided, then a question. Overtalking makes it hard to follow the conversation, uh particularly for people who might be following, not here in the room.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I just, you know, because I hear the the direct opposite. And I would hope that you're making a representation to us that's based upon fact.
Mm-hmm.
So my knowledge is that doctors are allowed to do these surgeries in Connecticut. Um, there's, there must be some sort of level of permission uh from parent guardian. Um, but they are permitted. And that's the activity that is looking to be protected here by this law, that this, that a juvenile in gee, well, a medical provider performs an act upon a juvenile and shielding that medical provider from liability. That's, that's the law, potential law, seven one three five, that's before us. So we wouldn't be talking about something that isn't permitted and shielding the provider. So uh, I, you know, I I just.
So I think the best person to talk to you about this would be a physician in the state of Connecticut. But what I can tell you is that in general, and for the most part, when it comes to gender-affirming care for minors, that is limited to hormone-based treatments, which are non-surgical.
Okay. And then coming, and I just, you talked about that parents don't um coach their children into engaging in this activity. Um, what's that based upon?
I'm, I'm not sure that I have evidence that parents do coach their children into becoming transgender. That's not a narrative that I have encountered in all of my work with transgender people. Um, I work with people who are trans, and in general, their parents are learning about what that means and coming along um to understand that and to learn to affirm them. So you might, for instance, talk to some folks at PFLAG who would have experience about parents um of trans kids and what that's like for them. Um, but not in my entire career, I've never run into an instance in which a parent has pushed a child to be trans in any way.
I have.
Okay.
So, I mean, and that's, you made certain representations to us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Comment, question, members of the committee? Comment, question? Now, thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Elle Palmer.
Hi. Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Elle Palmer. I'm testifying in opposition to House Bill seven one three five. Ten years ago, when I was fifteen, I came out to my parents as a transgender boy. One year later, I was prescribed testosterone at Planned Parenthood. I was sixteen. I told the doctor about my traumatic female puberty with debilitatingly painful periods, severe suicidal thoughts and self-harm, and anxiety so bad that I dropped out of school. I told him that I went to a children's mental hospital three times before I was fourteen. You might be surprised to hear that the doctors, nurses, and therapists not only knew these things, but they believed the root cause was due to my internal sense of gender identity. Transition was supposed to be the cure. Not even a history of sexual abuse will stop these medical professionals from putting a young girl on testosterone. Even if I had known testosterone would give me prediabetes, high blood pressure, early onset osteoporosis, and an increased risk of sterility, I wouldn't have said no. In my mind, there was no other option. It was transition or die. This myth persists in the LGBT community. Ten years later, you'll hear supporters of this bill call this life-saving care. When I was 19, I went back to Planned Parenthood. I told them I was female to male, but I wanted to go back to female. They didn't know what to do. As weeks turned to months, eventually every single doctor had called me back saying, I don't know. Maybe another doctor can help you. Planned Parenthood could easily put a teenage girl on testosterone, but no one in the entire state knew how to treat a woman who just wanted her female body back. For years, I couldn't live a normal life as a woman. For the first year of my detransition, I looked like a man wearing a bra. Can you imagine being a 20-year-old woman that people mistake for a man? The amount of times I was called sir left me thinking I would never be seen as a female again. Almost six years later, I still have a deep voice and some people still call me sir. I was only on testosterone for three years. This effect is permanent. I started taking prescribed steroids for a mental illness at age 16. This is not life or death. A teenage girl does not need testosterone to survive. That is what's happening here and that is what you need to vote against. Please oppose this bill so other detransitioners like me, who didn't understand the life sentence that they sign up for, will still be able to seek the justice we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Comment, question from members of the committee. Comment, question from members of the committee. Now, thank you for joining us this afternoon.
Thank you.
Lisa Pereira.
Hi there. Good afternoon, Senator Winfield, Representative Strabstrom, and members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Dr. Lisa Pereira and I serve as the Medical Director for the Women's Centers, a group of independent clinics with locations in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and here in Connecticut at our Hartford GYN Center. I'm here today in strong support of House Bill seven, one, three, five, which protects healthcare providers like me and expands access to essential services. Like abortion and gender-affirming care. For patients and families across state lines, this is incredibly important. Hartford GYN Center has provided full spectrum sexual and reproductive healthcare, including abortion care, since 1978. As the only independent provider in Connecticut, we operate outside large hospital systems, offering affordable, patient-centered care with a focus on dignity, privacy, and medical excellence. We regularly treat patients who are forced to travel here due to abortion bans in their home states. Unfortunately, many more can't reach us because of work, childcare, or financial limitations. Telemedicine helps bridge that gap. It allows us to care for patients remotely with the same safety and quality as in-person visits, and it enables earlier access to abortion, something patients overwhelmingly prefer. I will note the obvious. I am a mom of two and had to get my kids off to school this morning. Without this virtual option to attend this hearing today, I would not have been able to participate. While I traveled to Connecticut regularly to provide care, having the ability to remotely participate in this hearing expanded my access. And this is just what telemedicine does for patients. We are committed to providing the highest standard of care regardless of who our patients are or where they live. But we also know that abortion bans put lives at risk and disproportionately harm people struggling to make ends meet, the LGBTQI-plus community, and Black and Brown communities. No provider should face punishment from another state simply for following Connecticut's laws and doing what's best for their patients. In 2022, Connecticut led the way by passing the nation's first shield law. Today, the threats we feared have become reality. Doctors in supportive seats like Dr. Margaret Carpenter in New York are now facing legal attacks from anti-abortion states. Connecticut must act again, and House Bill seven, one, three, five is the right next step. It strengthens our protections and ensures providers can safely offer care via telehealth, including medication abortion and medically necessary services for transgender youth. On behalf of Hartford GYN Center, I urge you to support this legislation. Our patients are counting on you to keep providers safe and ensure care remains accessible in the face of this national crisis. Thank you for your time and consideration. I also have been watching this whole hearing and noted the amazing pastor being questioned. I, as a physician, work very closely with the Children's Hospital of Pennsylvania and Connecticut.
I hate to interrupt you in the middle of that, but.
Thank you.
Your, your time has elapsed, so I'm going to see if there are questions. Questions, comments from members of the committee. Questions or comments? There are none. I want to thank you, uh, very much for joining us today, uh, to provide us with your expert testimony. Um, Liz Gustafus, just, just, I can't believe I messed that up. Sorry. It's one of those days.
Good afternoon. Senator Winfield, Representative Strabstrom, and esteemed members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Liz Gustafson, and I'm the Connecticut State Director with Reproductive Equity Now. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify in support of HB 7135. Reproductive Equity Now works in Connecticut and across New England to make equitable access to the full spectrum of, of care, a reality for all people. While a significant part of my job is advocating for policies that will protect and expand access to care, another component is having the honor and privilege to work with, learn from, and advocate on behalf of providers and their patients. As the State Director of RAN, as a former clinic escort volunteer, a board member of an abortion fund, a patient, and someone who needed abortion care myself. Over the last seven years of doing this work, I have seen, experienced, and navigated a lot. And yet, a lot remains uncertain about the next seven years, especially the next four. What is certain and has always been constant is that people have and will always need access to abortion and pregnancy-related care. And that providers are committed to ensuring patients, regardless of who they are, where they are from, or any circumstance, can access the essential care that they need. Whether it be a pandemic, the makeup of the Supreme Court, who holds power in the Oval Office, or targeted out-of-state legal threats and persecution, abortion providers remain resolute and committed to ensuring people receive the highest quality standard of medical care. Thankfully, in 2022, Connecticut saw what was coming and took action to pass the first shield protections for providers, patients, and helpers pre-Dobbs. And similar provisions have been enacted in 18 states and Washington DC. Now, three years later, we know just how critical it is to continue protecting providers and bolster our existing shield. To include those who utilize telehealth to meet patients, no matter their zip code. Providers are ready to answer the call and meet patients wherever they are, and we must answer the call to further protect them. The provisions of our shield law work together to allow Connecticut to do everything in its power as a state government to protect providers, patients, and helpers, and stipulates that Connecticut's law will govern over what we deem to be legally protected and lawful healthcare, which is exactly what Dobbs purportedly enabled us to do. Care via telehealth is increasingly popular, whether it is primary care, mental health care, or reproductive healthcare. People should be able to access the abortion care that they envision for themselves. And for millions of people in the US, that is medication abortion. Strengthening our shield provisions to cover telehealth who treat patients regardless of their zip code is a key way to ensure our state is utilizing every tool available to us. So providers can utilize every tool available to them to provide timely, essential, and compassionate care to their patients. We urge the committee to support HB 7135. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Question, comment from members of the committee. Question or comment? Uh, seeing none, any other day I could say Gustafus, Gustafson, but today, you know.
Somewhat, Dave.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Uh, Tanisha Senor.
Tanisha Senor. Okay. Uh, Beckham, Marin, Anderson.
Give me just one second.
Yeah, take your time.
Good afternoon, members of the Judiciary Committee. My name is Becca Maran Anderson. I am the Director of Pastoral Care for the Julian Way, a disability ministry nonprofit. And I also serve as the Mental Health Pastoral Fellow for the Southern New England Conference of the United Church of Christ. I'm here to speak in support of HB seven, one, three, five. As a person who provides pastoral care to individuals with disabilities, I think about access to healthcare a lot, including access to reproductive and gender-affirming care. The individuals with disabilities I serve live all across the country, including in states like Texas where patients cannot safely access reproductive and gender-affirming care, and healthcare workers cannot safely provide it. In the current political climate, I have a great many fears for the people I serve. But among those fears is that they will need abortions or gender-affirming care and be unable to access it. I am no medical expert, but I know that the statistics on pregnancy-related death in states like Texas and suicide among transgender people who cannot access gender-affirming care are horrifying. I live in fear of my people becoming part of those statistics. I believe that all people are made in the image of God, including transgender and non-binary people, who show the diversity of God's creation in the myriad ways they identify and express their gender. I believe that it is humanity's job to care for one another as best we can. And healthcare workers are a critical part of that ecosystem. When healthcare workers can face legal consequences from people who are not their patients for, for providing necessary and life-saving care, that ecosystem is threatened. How can we care for one another when caring is a punishable offense? I haven't heard it today, but I know that you may hear from other Christians that laws protecting reproductive and gender-affirming care are somehow a threat to Christians and to churches. That the free expression of religion requires limitations on access to necessary medical care. To that, I would say I express my religion most freely when I love and care for my neighbor as myself. Those whose Christianity is founded upon judging the choices of others and denying bodily autonomy do not speak for me. If that is what they believe religious freedom to be, it seems a very narrow and confining definition of freedom. If we are free to judge others but not free to offer care, we are not free at all. For myself, I am a follower of Jesus of Nazareth, who was a healthcare worker who provided life-saving and life-giving care throughout his ministry and was murdered in part for his healing work. I seek the freedom I believe he sought for all people to live in safety and mutual care. I hope that you will help ensure this freedom by passing HB seven, one, three, five. Thank you for your time and I would be happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Caitlin Lemay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
I would like to, excuse me, I would like to thank the Chairs and the Judiciary Committee for raising a bill to prohibit female genital mutilation and cutting in Connecticut. My name is Caitlin Lemay and I'm the Director of the US End FGMC Network, a national organization that represents around 200 survivors, advocates, healthcare providers, and other stakeholders and experts on FGMC in the United States and globally. And I'm a member of the Connecticut Coalition to End FGMC. I'm here to encourage you to vote SB 1438 favorably out of committee with amendments. The US End FGMC Network requests that you kindly consider substituting the current bill language with the language submitted with my testimony and supported by the Connecticut Coalition. Unfortunately, the current language is not comprehensive enough and does not accurately address FGMC in the state. First, FGMC should be prosecuted as a Class C felony rather than a Class D felony, making it consistent with the state's childhood sexual assault criminal penalties. FGMC is a serious violent crime committed against children and is a form of childhood sexual assault. Therefore, it should be consistent with childhood sexual assault laws in Connecticut. Second, I want to emphasize that in the case of FGMC, parents do not intend to hurt their children and genuinely think that they're doing what is right and often face significant community pressure to cut their daughters, making it a complex issue to determine who is responsible. Therefore, our proposed bill language intends to stop the cutter by holding them accountable with the criminal penalty. In addition, the education and outreach provision is essential to educate and empower parents and communities. There are additional amendments that we are recommending, which are reflected in the submitted bill language. It's important that any legislation that addresses FGMC is comprehensive, holistic, and appropriately addresses both prevention and supportive services for impacted communities. Lastly, I want to be clear, FGMC is not the same as gender-affirming healthcare. And we strongly disagree with any conflation between FGMC and gender-affirming care. We respectfully request that this bill remain focused on FGMC and does not conflate these two very important issues. The US End FGMC Network requests that the Joint Committee on Judiciary immediately take the necessary steps to pass SB 1438. Once these necessary amendments are made, girls in Connecticut and the US need and deserve to be protected from FGMC, and they deserve your urgent attention. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let me just clarify, I just want to make sure I understand. So you're asking for the criminal penalty to apply to the person who actually performs the cutting, but not to, say, a family member who brings, uh, the young girl in. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the civil liability that you're asking for, would that apply to the parent or a family member or to the cutter or both?
Um, I would have to double-check the language, um, and I could get back to you on that. Um, I believe that would be up to the survivor, um, but I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Well, I, I mean, the language, yes, it's up to the survivor to decide whether to bring the claim or not, but certainly sort of the extent to liability, um, you know, needs to be set in statute as, as to who would be the, a proper defendant other, under that lawsuit.
Right, it, uh, it is up to the person, um, who is bringing the suit, um, as to who, who are they, are bringing the, the civil lawsuit against.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, yes, but there's a step before that. The step before that is the statute needs to authorize or give standing to somebody. But if you're not sure, that's okay, we'll track it down. Um, all right, further questions or comments? Seeing none, thanks for being with us. Um, Tanya Burley.
Hi, my name is Tanya Burley. Thank you for letting me speak. I am a civil engineer by trade. I'm also an organizer with Trans Haven, a 100% trans-led organization, uh, here in Connecticut. And I just want to say, unlike many of the folks that have spoken here today against HB seven, one, thirty-five, I am an organizer here in Connecticut. I am in contact with hundreds of transgender people every day that live here in Connecticut. I am in favor of HB seven, one, thirty-five, because I think we often talk about transgender people in the abstract, but I talk to these folks, my own community, every day. And we are your coworkers, we are your neighbors, we are the people who work in healthcare, we work in infrastructure. We are critical parts. We are critical parts of this society. And I don't want us to think about transgender people in the abstract. And talking to all of these people, these hundreds of people in Connecticut, your constituents, are terrified. They are terrified of what's happening at the federal level, what's happening at the state's levels. I can tell you right now, I work with facilitating folks who are coming fleeing from other states, seeking refuge here in Connecticut because they are being cut off from access to life-saving care. And we can see that in other states, while there's a lot of focus on the talk about trans youth, we can see that, as was said at a CPAC conference a couple of years ago, the right wing's goal is to eradicate transgender people from public life. It started with the trans youth in Texas, and now, just a few days ago, they have putting motion forward on a bill that will ban gender-affirming care for all people. We have, as well at the federal level, we have, it was recently announced that DOGE recently acquired all of the federal documentation for all people who received first-name changes, which includes a lot of transgender folks. We also have, just a few days ago, an announcement that they are going to be keeping a federal database of anyone who is pregnant. The federal government is launching these attacks. Other states are carrying out these orders on the federal government's order. And this has people terrified. People are coming, not just transgender people, but anybody seeking abortion care or reproductive health care. And we need to be able to provide for them the safe haven that they believe Connecticut to be. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from committee? Seeing none, thanks for being with us. Zyra Patwa.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Judiciary Committee. I am here in support of an amended bill, 1438, an act prohibiting female genital mutilation. My name is Zara Power. I'm a proud Connecticut resident for over 30 years and a member of a community which practices FGMC. I am also a survivor of FGMC, co-founder of We Speak Out, Chair of Sayo's US Advisory Board, and a member of the Connecticut Coalition to End FGMC. As a survivor, I would like to see an end to this harmful traditional custom that is a form of gender-based violence and child abuse. So I fully support laws to criminalize them. Banning of FGMC would help act as a strong deterrent to parents who may be under pressure to cut their daughters. However, this current bill does not fully define FGMC, including all the types of cutting. FGMC is the partial or total removal of the female genitalia or altering the structure or function of the female genitalia for non-medical purposes, including but not limited to infibulation, the partial or total removal of the clitoris, prepuce, labia minora, or labia majora, the narrowing of the vaginal orifice, or any other procedure that causes injury to the female genitalia for non-medical purposes. Criminalization of FGMC is just one aspect of a multi-pronged strategy to end this harmful cultural practice. The first federal FGMC case in the US was in Michigan in 2017 against two practicing physicians in my community. They were charged with cutting two girls from Minnesota, but were suspected of cutting closer to 100 girls. When the story broke, education about FGMC and the law surrounding it was profoundly impactful as the conversation around the secret practice began to open up in the US. For many survivors, their healthcare providers did not know about FGMC and therefore missed clear signs that someone needed help. This is why a provision for education of stakeholders is essential. The Coalition to End FGMC is proposing an amendment to develop and administer a program of education for the prevention of FGMC. The program will be designed to provide information about the health risks and emotional trauma inflicted by the practice, as well as remedies and penalties for committing FGM. With education, parents and healthcare providers can understand this harmful practice and can be sensitive to the needs of survivors and those at risk of cutting. I am a proud NAMHAGA, especially because we, as a state, recognize when something is wrong, regardless of how many residents are impacted. And yet, we do not have a law banning FGMC, which is clearly gender-based violence and child abuse. A comprehensive law against FGMC in Connecticut is the first step in ensuring that no more little girls have to go through what so many of us have gone through, and that survivors are sensitively cared for. Please amend and pass this bill to protect girls from FGMC in our state because one girl cut is one too many.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the committee? If not, thanks for being with us and thanks for sharing your story. All right, we have two folks who were online who we missed. We'll begin with Jared Ross.
Hello, to the Chair and the members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in opposition to SB 7135. My name is Dr. Jared Ross. I'm a board-certified physician and Senior Fellow at Do No Harm Action, an organization that works to protect children from harmful medical interventions. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend Detransitioner Awareness Day in Washington, DC, where I heard firsthand from young adults who were indoctrinated into the gender ideology cult as children, most of whom were started on irreversible cross-sex hormones and had permanent mutilative surgeries to remove healthy breasts or testicles. We have an extraordinary epidemic of young adults coming forward to speak out against the irreparable harms they have suffered under the guise of so-called gender-affirming care. The last thing we should even consider doing is taking the unprecedented step of granting immunity to the doctors that perform these experimental procedures, especially when it comes to children. Healthcare professionals should be held to the highest standards providing evidence-based treatment, not ideologically-driven butchery. Let's be clear, there is no strong evidence supporting the use of medical interventions such as puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, or surgical procedures to treat gender-distressed children. We know that most, if not all, of these children are dealing with underlying psychosocial or mental health challenges coming from broken homes, suffering from PTSD, depression, or a history of abuse. These children most certainly need compassionate, biology-affirming talk therapy to address these challenges. We know that nearly nine out of 10 of these children will outgrow this gender confusion if simply allowed to go through a normal puberty. Instead, their parents are being blackmailed with the threat of suicide by politically-motivated doctors. The suicide myth has been thoroughly debunked. Several large studies have shown that the rate of substance abuse, depression, and suicide actually increases after these patients receive so-called gender-affirming surgery. Additionally, our Stop the Harm database has documented 54 children in the state of Connecticut who have been started on puberty blockers or cross-sex hormones, and 46 children who have undergone irreversible surgical procedures. We must protect children from the horrors of so-called gender-affirming care. By shielding doctors and surgeons who perform these unconscionable procedures from repercussions, we only allow medical experimentation on vulnerable troubled children to continue. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the committee? If not, thanks for being with us. Next will be Tanisha Signor.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for having me. My name is Tanisha Signor. I'm the Policy Director at She Leads Justice, formerly known as QUELF, or a statewide nonprofit that works through a justice and equity lens to advocate for under-resourced and marginalized women and girls in Connecticut. I am submitting testimony today in support of HB 7135 and Act concerning the Provision of Reproductive and Gender-Affirming Healthcare Services to Patients. This legislation will ensure Connecticut is doing everything in its power to protect our healthcare providers. She Leads Justice is proud to stand in coalition with Reproductive Equity Now and Planned Parenthood of Southern New England in support of this bill as a leading advocate for Connecticut's women and girls. She Leads Justice believes it is essential that Connecticut Legislature, sorry, acts in the best interest of women and girls in the state and in service to the providers and protecting the services that they provide all across the state. As nationwide attacks on these essential services continue, it is vital that our state increases safeguards surrounding these rights, continues to guarantee all Connecticut residents have the right to make their own health care decisions, and ensures our residents have access to the care they decide on. Connecticut's General Assembly was proactive in passing the Reproductive Freedom Defense Act in 2022. And in 2023, we strengthen these protections. These protections help form a powerful shield for our residents and healthcare providers. However, there's more we can do. It is critical that we expand our shield laws to protect all abortion providers in the state, including telehealth providers, regardless of the patient's location. It has been two years since the overturning of Roe v. Wade, and since then, 19 states have taken steps to severely restrict or completely ban abortion care. These developments have resulted in a public health, racial, economic, and social justice crisis. Last year, we enacted permanent telehealth expansions, which more accurately reflect the modernization of healthcare and how that care is delivered. The result of these expansions includes the abilities for providers to treat patients in any zip code. Subsequently, our providers have delivered medication abortion treatment to tens of thousands of patients via telemedicine appointments. Protecting our state's telehealth providers and ensuring they can treat patients according to the medical standard of care is exceedingly integral in today's climate. Creating policies aimed at bolstering access to and treatment via telemedicine is an act of health justice. Many people seeking care are hindered by financial means, lack of transportation, inability to take time off work, and the costly reality of childcare. Medication abortions account for 60% of today's abortions in the US. They have a well-documented history of safety and efficacy, and it is paramount that Connecticut make sure our licensed telehealth providers are adequately protected. We urge the committee to vote favorably on HB 7135.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? If not, appreciate you being with us. That will conclude our public hearing for today. Appreciate everybody's time this morning and into the afternoon. We will be back.